This conference will now be recorded.
To call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologize for being a couple of minutes late. The next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place on Friday, July 8th, 2022, at 9:00 a.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive, Sebring, Florida, 33872. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Okay, we'll start with the consent agenda. Minutes of the Board of Supervisors, regular meeting held June 3rd, 2022. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any board comments? I just have one. Page nine. It's listed as Advent Hospital, not Advent. It's actually only listed as Advent, A-V-E-N-T. Could we just change it to Advent Hospital, please? Are there any other board comments? Any public comments? Okay.
Supervisor Phillips?
I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Do you have comments on this, Pat?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley? President Brooks.
Yes. Next is the Treasurers' Report of April 2022. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anybody have any comments on the Treasurers' Report? Besides me. Okay, the only question I got on the Treasurers' Report, Chris, is I need you to look at, some of the numbers are not consistent. Like, if you look at page two, the annual, amended annual budget for the roads and drain, it says $1,369,900. But if you go further down the report, like on page nine, it says $1,804,900. So the numbers, for some reason, are not the same, and they should, I assume they should be. If they're not, I need to, I would like to know why.
I will check that.
Okay, yeah, I didn't expect you to have the answer today. That was the only thing that I had seen in the district financials that I was asking about. Anybody have anything else? Is there any public comments on the district financials? Okay.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley? Supervisor Phillips? President Brooks.
Yes. We're getting there, Pat. Next is the GAF Financial Report of April 2022. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Mike, you want to say anything about the GAF financials before I ask?
No, I just, I can just kind of update you. Obviously, the April numbers, as we know, were not, were not very good. That first Monday in April is when we had the hail damage, so we, you know, had all the lost revenue from the hotel rounds, the tournaments that we lost, the F&amp;B revenue that we lost. Obviously, that really put us behind for April. But I do want to make sure the board is aware that we are going through our insurance. I'm working with Chris and our insurance company. We are seeking business loss claims, which will include revenue, labor, extra expenses. So when we get all that worked out, which I should have all the information that they have requested back to Chris, hopefully early next week, that will definitely help the April financials look better. I don't know how it's going to work into, you know, our fiscal year budget, but they will, it will turn these numbers around quite a bit when we, when we get that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions from the board on the GAF financials? I'm sorry?
I just said I knew it was going to be bad.
Yeah. Just from the last meeting, I can't remember, when are we going to see the actual, that change that we discussed on the average rates, the price per round?
Yeah, so obviously, when we had that discussion, these financials were already almost complete. So I have not got our draft financials yet for May. So when I get those, I'll work with Chris, who's our accountant, to get those.
Okay, so we'll see the May report, we'll see that, and then you can explain to us what we're looking at.
Right. We will, well, we're going to remove the ones that don't apply, so.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. I do have one other question. Can you, let me give you the names if you don't know these. There's a couple of guys that we paid, cut some checks for that I didn't recognize their name. I'm sure they're well legitimate. S.I.P. Ventures, do you know who they are? We gave them a check of $24,000. S.I.P. Ventures? Let me give you, let me give you the names, you guys get back to me on them. I didn't expect you to have, walk around with them. It's S.I.P. Ventures?
Yep.
Highlands, N.E., whatever that is. I.S.T.R.C.
I got Highlands.
Estrick is for what?
Soil sampling.
Soil sampling.
Oh, soil sampling? Okay, forget that one. And America First Air?
America First Air is a company that purchased mid-Florida fire, so they're the ones that do the maintenance for our fire suppression system.
America First Air.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, no, that's, that, okay, yes, so that. Yeah, he's correct.
Oh. $4,500 bucks?
I can, I can email you what that was for.
Yeah, just get back to me on the America First, justifying the amount, and there's S.I.P. Ventures for $24,000, I guess. That's the only ones I had. Are there any, any other board comments?
I, um, Mike?
Yeah, I'm listening.
On your special events, we have a lady in charge of special events, correct? Special events coordinator?
Uh, yeah, we have a banquet captain.
A banquet captain? How many banquets are we seeing in our future, and will it justify the salary that you pay her?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, she's an hourly employee, so she gets, the more banquets we have, the more, obviously, she would, she would be paid.
Doesn't Jessica actually do this?
If that's what she's talking, so if you're talking about our sales, our salesperson? Yeah, absolutely, so, yeah, we do. She probably organizes probably 200, 250 events a year, and it's kind of almost back to normal. We go from.
But she's hourly?
No, she is not. She is salary, correct. I'm sorry, I misunderstood who you were talking about. Absolutely, that, but.
What do we consider a special event? I mean, our Chamber of Commerce is not special, we get that anyway. I mean, a special event, would her be actually going out and bringing in money? Is that not correct?
That is correct. She does all those events, even from chamber to member events, to all those events, she coordinates all of those. So we have banquet event orders that are all organized, that she controls menus, to linen, to all that stuff. So there's, I mean, that's definitely a full-time job. I sat in that seat for a little while. There's a lot of work there, for sure. And we, you know, and she does a little bit more than that. She kind of helps out with the marketing side of the restaurant as well. Social media, things like that, as well as just marketing all the other stuff, even, you know, when we do trivia nights, you know, all that sort of stuff, she's in charge of handling all of those, too.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you, Mike.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley? Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Okay, Pat, public comments for anything that we're not going to discuss later? Anybody?
Pat Holmes, resident. I've got one question to ask. The cart barn, the pavement or the rocks that are there, it's getting in dire shape of needing some work done on it. The weeds are growing up, and it's going to start raining, puddles are there. I think we should be able to do something with that. Also, a lot of the doors are not working properly in there. You have a heck of a time getting them open, and it looks like it needs a good cleaning. So I think it just needs some tender loving care. That's all.
Are you talking about the area where you store your rentals?
Yes.
Okay, which section are you looking, are you talking about?
The new cart barn, as I call it.
Which one is the new cart barn?
The one that's right down here on Edgewater.
The one that's down by the dog park, where you park for the dog park?
Yes.
Yes.
That's the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, Mike, you going to check it out and take a look at it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat. Any other public comments on anything that we're not discussing later? Okay, Commissioner Scott Court, you're on.
Good morning. Just a couple of things to report. I think many of you are aware, hit a little bump in the road at our last meeting with your ARPA funding. The last meeting I attended here, I reported that the request for your nine projects of $561,100 passed the board three to two. Our last meeting was a consent item to do a budget amendment to transfer those into the project accounts for you. Commissioner Roberts, who was one of the three votes that passed it initially, he was on vacation on his anniversary with his wife, he wasn't there. So when it ended up in a stalemate, a two to two vote last meeting, my request with staff to make it an action item for next Tuesday, because I know if it's a consent item, it's going to be pulled out and made an action item anyways. So I'm cautiously optimistic that if Commissioner Roberts votes like he did the first time, I don't know why he would not, that that will be finalized then. So fingers crossed, but I don't see any reason to be alarmed at this point on that. It's just a technicality at this point. The only other thing I have to report to you, maybe you've read in the paper, we are, our county administrator has given us a notice, will be leaving us July the 1st to take a position up north as a county administrator. So we are currently in the search process for a new county administrator. On Tuesday, we will, the board will be tasked with making a selection for an interim county administrator. So there'll be more news to come on that, and other than that, we are certainly well immersed in the budget time right now, and there'll be more of that to come. So that's all I have to report this morning. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions? Can you give me an update on collection of garbage cans? Is there one?
I have asked, I talked to our county administrator, waiting to hear from you folks on when you've got some ready to pick up, and we will.
Oh, so the ball's in our court?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yeah. So I don't, we haven't been notified that there's any to be picked up as of last week.
Oh, I don't think we've notified anybody yet.
Yeah.
If it's in our court, okay.
Yeah, yeah. And we've, and then they've told us, as soon as you call us and you have some, I remember where you collect them, at your main manager or what have you, that we will come and get them.
What would you consider an adequate amount to call you guys on?
I would say, you know, if you had 30 or 40 of them, you know, start off, because they'll load up a small truck or a trailer and come and take those, so, you know. Or when they're, you know, if you've got some that, you know, I'm not going to say wait until you have 40. If you've got 20 or 25 there, don't expect them to be hanging around in your way for months. So, you know, put out the initial call, give us a shout, and we'll get over here and get them picked up for you.
Okay. Is there any update on Schumacher?
I spoke with one of the landowners to the south yesterday afternoon that had some concerns when this was talked about before. I'm going to be reaching out to the other landowners also on Schumacher to talk to them about that. I think I reported to you, I did talk to staff about, they gave me two options, paving just down to where Cortez would extend out, and then paving all the way to the end. Of course, it's less of a cost paving down just to where Cortez would be, and may resolve some privacy issues that the people down on the end have concerns about. You know, a lot of people won't travel past the end of a paved road unless they need to go down there. So if you pave the road, potentially, you would create more traffic that's going to end up at a dead end pretty much down there, or have to turn around. So we spoke about that. I want to speak with some of the other property owners, but as I had stated before, and we certainly received your resolution on the wishes of your board, that you want the county to pay for all the paving out there, not to do the cost split program that we currently have in place, the 50/50 program. You know, so I am still doing some due diligence with the other property owners out there, and see where they sit on this thing. You know, if I was to bring this to the board on Tuesday, we would have a tough lift to break away from policy on the 50/50 split. So that's why I want to talk with some of the other property owners, and we'll be back meeting with you folks also, may meet with some of you individually to talk about this also. And, but it is in the works, and it's on my priority list, so we're continuing to work on it. Like I stated, that if and when this does indeed happen, the road is all going to have to be shifted to the north. So this isn't a simple project that we can take the road exactly where it's at, maybe add some additional base to it, and then pave on top of that. The whole road has to be shifted to the north because of where it's sitting now. So that adds extra expense, it adds some complication in moving utilities and what have you. So that is going to be a project. This isn't just a simple, bring some asphalt out here and pave this road, so.
So there's no estimate on what's up on it?
Yeah. I have my notes in my office, but to pave all the way down to the end, the estimate was about $600,000. And it was about little, about half of that, of course, to pave half of it and not go all the way down. So of course, it's an easier lift paving half of it than it is all of it. But the way that the county looks at this is, when we have an existing shell rock road that we're going to pave, okay, that we currently are grading, okay, so the county grader goes out there and grades that road on a schedule. The county's wishes, or the staff's wishes, if we paved it, would be to pave it all the way, so then we don't have to continue to have the annual cost of grading the remaining part, okay, and I understand that. But of course, you're talking half as much paving it halfway. Grading does come in at expense, but nowhere near the expense. There is some other grading that we do out in this area, so it's not sending a grader just all the way out here just to do Schumacher. So not a perfect scenario, but I think the more palatable approach, and I'll talk with y'all more about that, would be look at paving it down to where you folks would extend Cortez out, and then, you know, go with that. So we'll go from that, but there'll be more discussion on that. Like I said, I can tell you if, in my opinion, that if it was approved today, by the time the engineering work was done, and everything laid out and what have you, you'd probably be looking at a year or so before construction would start. Now, because of the movement of the utilities and the drainage work and things that would have to be done along Schumacher.
How far over do they have to move it over?
I've been told roughly the road is going to have to be shifted about 30 feet to the north.
Wow.
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah. The entire road base, most of the road base will have to be pulled up where it is at now, and we would reuse that road base as we could to relocate the road to the north after all the utilities were moved. So, yeah. But staff is working on that, and they're looking at some cost estimates and looking at what the complexity of moving the utilities and what have you would be. So.
I got to ask this, is there any recognition on the board's part of the amount of money that you guys have received from the sale of Sun and Lake lots, plus the additional income that we have provided through taxes with all of the housing that's been built here?
There is on my part, I believe there is on Commissioner Campbell's part, I believe there is on Commissioner Roberts' part.
Thank you.
So I continue to bring that to their attention. You know, I've had some pushback from Commissioner Tuck in relation to the timing of your application for ARPA funding. I explained to them some of the reasons for that, and management changes and things like that. And see, when ARPA came out, it was a very quick push for us, because the first deadline that we were given was about 45 days after we were awarded the money, that we had to designate that money to different projects. So we were rushed on that end also, and it was just a comedy of kind of, you know, being rushed and what have you, and things that went on there, and, you know, explaining to them the management changes here. I've reminded them on the amount of lots that we have sold out here, that you folks lost all of your improvement district taxes or liens that you ever had on any of those lots, and certainly the substantial amount of general revenue impact on each house that is built. You know, I can give you some examples and some research that I've been doing because of staff has resurfaced the conversation about impact fees, whether we will, you know, whether we have the desire to reinstitute impact fees at this time. And I've been doing a lot of research with the Property Appraisers Office and different scenarios, and I can tell you, one of them is, is that I looked at a model of, for 2021 from January through December, on how many homes that changed hands they were sold, okay? And that was actually, I believe, is a big, over 4,600 homes, okay? And just by those homes changing hands from one owner to the next is an additional $2.7 million worth of general revenue impact. Because you and I could have bought in the same neighborhood 15 years ago, the same identical house built by the same builder. We lived there for 15 years, we each claimed homestead exemption on that house. You were protected, and I was protected by a 3% cap in the increase of your assessed value because you're homesteading that property, okay? I decide after 15 years, I'm going to move out, I'm going to go somewhere else, you stay there, okay? New buyer comes in, if they come from out of state, they have no homestead portability to carry with them, okay? If they do from within state, they would have some that they would take to their new purchase. But if they're coming from out of state, they're going to be assessed on the 80% of the market value of that house that is going to be looked at comparable sales in that area. You're protected by 3%. So I've done research that you could have the same house as your neighbor next door, and your neighbor's paying two to three times the taxes that you're paying. So those people are paying an impact, okay? So that's somewhat of my argument, and also a big misconception, and I wish it was different, but impact fees can only be used for new infrastructure. They can be not, you cannot be used for existing infrastructure at all. If it could be, it'd be a great thing that we could use it for drainage issues, we could use it for road issues that need attention and what have you. So, you know, there's a lot of, I guess, misunderstood or misinformation out there when the public look at impact fees. The general taxpayer usually is in favor of impact fees because they feel the burden of that infrastructure is put on somebody else other than them as a taxpayer. So politically, you know, there is taxpayers that, well, yeah, all these people are coming into our county, they need to pay for this infrastructure to keep up with their needs. And also share with you something that was amazing to me, because we just had our 2020 census that was done, you know, completed in 2020. Highlands County's population only grew by, from 2010 to 2020, only grew by 2.5%, 2,448 net population gain. To me, that was very low. Our last impact study that we did in 2010, okay, impact fees have been sunsetted since 2009 in this county. The previous county commission did another study in 2010, because they were thinking about re-implemented, that we paid $110,000 for that study. And that study from Duncan Associates, and they used different sources for their data, they predicted the population growth in Highlands County between 2010 and 2030 to be 1,400 residents per year. So if you take between 2010 and 2020, or 10 years, their population growth was based on 14,000 residents. We gained 2,500. They overestimated by 571% or over 11,000. So as you can see, the methodology of the study and the data that they used, and I don't think they did anything maliciously, the University of Florida and some of these, they predict population growth all over the United States and in Florida, what have you. They took the data that was given to them at that time, but somebody didn't get it right. So all the methodology and what the impact fees were based on, the amounts or what have you, was based on a population growth of 14,000 people. We had 2,500. A misconception, I think, with the population growth in Highlands County is that, of course, I've lived here 46 years, if you drive up and down Highway 27, you're like, good lord. But that is not to be confused with the population growth in Highlands County. A vast majority of that traffic is transitioning through Highlands County from north and south. It's not county residents, it's not county traffic, okay? So, you know, is our county growing? Sure it's growing, you know? Do we have to look at infrastructure needs? Absolutely, you know? But I'm not convinced at this point that impact fees is the answer to that. We've seen a slight downtick in the housing market, interest rates have almost doubled in the past three months. You know, inflation is the highest it's ever been in 40 years, but you know, Florida's, people are still moving to Florida. They like our political climate here. Everybody dreams to come to Florida, so I think that's going to continue. We will feel, they're already talking, I mean, if you listen to the news, they're talking about a recession. You know, somewhat of a mild recession is what they're predicting now, but Florida's always tailed behind in a recession, you know, compared to other places in the country because of just the people that are relocating to Florida. And if you drive around Florida and you go back towards Orlando and you see some of these neighborhoods going up, these people aren't scared to build houses, they know people are coming, so, and I know there's a lot of development out here, so. There's more to come on that, but I'll certainly keep you guys updated.
Yes, Scott, I get, I just, when you're talking, and we've talked about this forever, even before you, the 50% is, is that everybody that's involved in this? Or I know at one time, the 50% was whoever asked for it. Well, that's not.
Ideally, what?
When you're talking, you're talking to the, because I would have no problem with 50%.
If it was split amongst.
If it was split amongst.
Everybody on the road that's benefiting from that paving, absolutely. Yes, I agree with that.
But I just wanted to mention, because I don't want to rehash that.
Sure.
You know how I stand there, but if you go down, if you have the time sometime, go down Cortez, we just had a, one of these big developers who are probably like Orlando, they have the money, I don't think the recession's going to, they cleared 62 lots.
Wow, okay.
And if it's just right down Cortez, and guess where they're going to want to come out?
Sure, exactly.
So I, I mean, and there's other developers in there now, but if you go down Cortez, past Sun and Lake Boulevard, you'll see a mass of lots being cleared, and they're going to start building.
Well, my, yeah, my, you know, my goal is to get with all of the property owners, or majority of the property owners along Schumacher, and reach out to them, because I believe it is an advantage to them, I believe it'll increase their property values by that road being paved. You know, some of that property to the south, you know, that's just pasture land, well, you know, my pitch to them is that if you participate in helping out in some form of paving Schumacher road, then a developer or somebody is more apt to look at your property and say, well, I could buy this 40 acres out here, and I could put 150, 200 homes out here, and I don't have the expense of paving this road. So it adds value to their property also, and that's my.
That's just the way it works in this coming.
Sure, absolutely.
That's the way it works, so.
Yeah, yeah. But you know, the thing is that, you know, certainly, we have a policy in place on the 50/50, and that's usually neighbors that go down their road, and they knock on doors and say, we'd like to see about, if you'd want to participate in getting the road paved, they get a figure from the county, and then they knock on doors. I will be doing some of that due diligence in this case, and talking to those folks, and seeing what they feel, and, you know, and I'll come back to you and at the proper time, and I will share with you what my recommendation would be that I think that I will need to get this past the board, okay? So like I said, I'm one of five up here like you folks are, we don't do anything individually, it takes at least three of us to do anything. So I want to do my homework, and when I'm prepared to present this in front of the board, I want to kind of make it a no-brainer that they, that they're, at least three of us, two others are convinced.
My recommendation would be just to, just to get some of the commissioners to drive out here.
Sure.
And to see that, that might make a difference, but all those homes that are being built there, they're going to want to come out, and they have to.
Yeah. And another thing that I would possibly suggest also, is of course, I'm your liaison, and we have communication somewhat on a regular basis, is that for each of you as supervisors to reach out to the other four commissioners at some time. Ask the. as supervisors to reach out to the other four commissioners at some time, ask to speak with them, whether it's on the, on the phone or in person, you know, of course, they can't meet together because of sunshine law, y'all can't meet together because of sunshine law, but each of you can meet, meet individually. But please be, where that you cannot share any of your conversations with one commissioner, you cannot share it with the other commissioner and say, well, Dr. Scott, he's all for this and what have you, sunshine law really prohibits you from doing that. And if that happens, they should tell you at that time, you can't share any of the comments with them.
And I didn't, I didn't mean for you, I meant, at the meeting maybe mentioned that they should drive out here, right?
Sure, absolutely.
I didn't want you to call, because I don't know how that works.
But, but I'm going to tell you, advocacy for what you're looking for goes a long way. That's how it works, that's how it works. You go and sit down with them and tell them how important it is to you and your district, and the reasons that you feel that the county should be, you know, paying more than their, their share of the fifty-fifty program, and those arguments certainly are valid arguments that you brought up on the lot sales and the development of those lots, you know, we're taking, I also did another study that I had the property appraisers, and I took every lot that was vacant at the beginning of 2021 that had a structure built on it by the end of 2021. Because many of these lots out here may not even be drawing a hundred dollars a year in taxes, okay? And that impact, I think, was about 1.7 million dollars a year. So anytime that we can take a vacant piece of land and put it on the tax roll, brings improvement district taxes to you folks to help you all with expenses here, brings us additional revenue to the county, that more people are, you know, helping build that pie. And, you know, I've always been in favor of instead of raising your taxes as broadening our tax base to bring in more revenue to keep up with their growth. And I think that we're doing a pretty good job at that right now in the county.
Scott, I get two questions. Should, should any of us attend that meeting on Tuesday? Would it help?
No, well, I, I don't believe so. I mean, you're, you're certainly welcome to, okay? Certainly welcome to attend. I don't know of any reason why Commissioner Roberts would turn his vote from a yes to a no. This part last time was a technicality, it was a budget amendment, okay? And, no, but it went the way that it did, that's how it works. And to me, it was just a bump in the road. I am fairly confident, but I can't speak for Commissioner Roberts, I can't question about this ahead of time, but he voted in favor of it. Because, you know, and I explained to them in the last meeting, and I explained to Commissioner Tuck, I said, this doesn't only serve the community of Sun and Lakes, it serves a school, and it serves a hospital, which is very important infrastructure to our county, okay? And, you know, I don't, sometimes I scratch my head, but they're, that's their, they, their commissioner, they have the right to their vote, their opinions.
And the other question I have, the cut through, that's not, that's not included in the six hundred thousand, right?
Yeah, on the, on the, on the ARPA projects we're talking about? Yeah, on the, are we talking? Okay.
Yeah, that's ours.
Okay, yeah, good. So other than that, like I said, I'll say, you know, if you're certainly always welcome to attend and what have you, because it will be an action item. An action items, the floor is opened up for public comment during any action items that come up for a board vote. But like I said, Commissioner Roberts simply wasn't there, he wasn't there where he could call in, he was in Alaska on his fiftieth anniversary, and good for him. So, but I believe this all will be taken care of on Tuesday. All right, very good. That's it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank y'all, take care.
Any other questions for Scott? Anybody from the public? Don't run out yet.
Scott, if you could stay a second. Bill Norcross, resident. We are really in financial problems, and we understand what the perhaps tax is going to be. And avaloreum tax here is what, eight point five five? It can go to ten five five, or it could go to eight. Now, I have, how do you feel about the avaloreum going up or down? What is the general feeling with the county?
It's a good question. I can tell you, the priority of this commission and our budget office has given us three different scenarios. I am fairly confident that you will see a millage decrease this year, okay? What that decrease, we don't know what that'll be yet, okay? Because property values in Highlands County, everybody hit your cap. If you're homesteaded, your property value pretty much is probably going to go up three percent. If you're non-homesteaded, it'll go up ten percent. Those, those are the two caps. Well, there's something that's called the rollback rate, which erases the property value increase to keep your taxes the same as they were the year before. I can tell you that it will not be that, it will not be a complete rollback to absorb all that property value increase. But I can tell you, I am not in favor, and I will not approve the budget without some sort of millage reduction.
The other question I think some, some people had was on the fire fees. Now, you reduce one budget and you increase another, so how is that going to affect us?
There's five categories in our fire assessment, two of them, one of them industrial warehouse and vacant land. Those were frozen last year because they were being assessed above the level of service that those categories were receiving. So our goal and our objective is, is to set the rates according to where the services are going. You will probably see, the board has the authority, last year, we, we approved the authority to, for up to three years to have an, an increase or decree in, in the non-advalorem fire assessment. You will probably see somewhere around a seven percent increase in your residential home. On an average home, last numbers that I looked at, roughly a two thousand square foot home or what have you, would be less than ten dollars a year in your increase. So there probably will be a little bit of a non-advalorem increase on the fire assessment part. But understand also that we are building now a, a fire rescue department. We're going from a volunteer system to a blended system, volunteer and full-time, you know, because of the times and the need for services in this county. So if you look at, if you look at other rates and what other county residents are paying in surrounding counties around us, ours still is considerably less than what you're seeing around us. Do I like to raise your non-advalorem assessment? No, but I can tell you, there's certain standards that we have to meet from fire protection standards. When fire trucks turn, turn a certain age, they're not frontline equipment ready or qualified, anything else, you know? Fire assessment is just like insurance, nobody likes painted until you need it. But if you want to be able to dial the phone, dial nine-one-one and have somebody coming to your rescue, that takes money to do that. And certainly, I feel it's our fiduciary responsibility to provide an adequate level of public safety in our county. So there will be, yes, there will be a little bit of an increase, but not an exorbitant increase in my opinion.
I understand the, the fire chief is realigning the, the work to have more volunteer in keeping the cost down, which we really all appreciate. Well, thank you very much, Scott, for the update. And I think it's a boring subject talking about taxes, but it's important. So if people know a little bit more about it, it'd be appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Pat Holmes, resident. I was just wondering, is there any update on the recycle and location, where it's going to be and when it's going to be open?
Yes, Lake Placid facility is open, it's been open for a few weeks now. Avon Park facility, I'm being told, is still on track to open up July first, okay? And I believe that's on Harris Street or something up in Avon Park. If you, if you go to the highlandsfl.gov and you click on our solid waste department, they have some updates posted there. And then the Sebring site will be by Max Longfield off of Hammock Road, by the ballparks there around the corner. And that is slated to be open on August first. And those, but those will be staffed three and a half days a week. I don't know if some of you all watch the news, other counties or in cities, or Bradenton just stopped their curbside recycling for the same exact reasons, contamination, the cost, and really, none of it was getting recycling for most part, we just go into the landfill anyways. So they've taken a different approach, which I think has already backfired on them, they have put up different recycling dumpsters around the city that are not manned. And I heard that now they're dealing with all the garbage is getting thrown in there, mattresses, just what have you. We knew ahead of time that that just doesn't work here. So all of our locations will be manned, they'll be fenced and locked when they're not open, because I'm going to tell you, if you don't, unfortunately, there's just not enough people, not enough people that respect the process, and we'll be right back where we started. So they'll be manned three and a half days a week, which will include half a day on Saturdays for people that are working. And we'll be taking glass, which we normally did not do before. So they'll get a lot of information out there. And really, it's, to me, that's, that's the best program, because then you're going to get people that really want to make a difference and recycle the right way. And there'll be somebody there that if they're bringing something that's not recyclable, that it's not going to be put into the stream and contaminated.
Has there, has there been any, in the short time that it's been up there, are they throwing it in front of the gates there, just leaving it on?
Not at this point.
Not at the...
In any of the sites that we do, and we're putting up video surveillance also, because so if we add some of that stuff, we can go back to that before, and it'll be positioned the way that you can see tag number.
Good.
And my second question, Scott, is on the Schumacher Road, you're going to move that thirty feet to the north. Is there, what is, what is the reasoning for that?
What I'm being told is the road is kind of put in the wrong place, that through some survey and what have you, the road should have been more to the north than what it was. And of course, you go back a number of years, and, you know, how things were done back then. And I guess somebody didn't dot their i's and cross their t's. But with the survey and what have you that they've looked at and what, that the road needs to be shifted to the north. So, yeah, it's just one of the misfortunate things that was done.
Anything else for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
I do have one question regarding Schumacher for us, well, you can listen to it. Do we have an up-to-date estimate on what it would cost to extend Cortez? Because if we're going to go talk to the county people, which I think we should...
That's the first thing we should do.
We should have a number on what we think is going to cost to do Cortez. I know we did one a couple of years ago.
We had one last year, I think.
I guess my question would be, how good is the, I know we had one, but how good is it now? Because we, we probably have to put a certain percentage on top of it if it's still good.
Yeah, I mean, my suggestion, of course, if you haven't got an updated cost to get that and be looking at it as a consideration in your budget.
Right.
Or something you'd be putting away, because of course, if we can work this through the way that I hope to and what have you, there's going to be a commitment on each end. It's going to be a commitment that you guys are extending Cortez, we don't want to pave it and say, well, we don't have the money to extend Cortez, it could be another year or two. We would like to see it all happen at the same time. That would be the goal of mine.
As we would too.
We would too.
So I don't know who, is that Drew or is that?
Well, we...
Drew and I talked to Excavation Point about five and a half months ago, and also some plans from the county engineer's office. And in that time, it was a little over three hundred thousand.
Well, we need the updated, we need to get whatever that is, an updated number, and then we can say, add ten percent because it's at least a year away from doing it or something, we'll come up with a percentage. At least we have something when we go in to talk to them.
At least you can cover your base of what you know now.
Right.
You know, and if it goes up another ten or fifteen percent by the time the project happens, at least you've got a majority of that in your budget.
Right. So we are going to need a formal estimate.
Sure, yeah, yeah. But certainly take a look at that, and if we can help you out in any of those means, please reach out to me or staff, and we'll do what we can.
Okay.
Very good.
Anything?
Maybe I can shed some light. This, Bill Norcross, resident, this Schumacher project has been going on for quite a while. And I can remember years ago, the first cost estimate was a hundred and twenty-five dollars a foot. Back then, whatever it was, seven, eight, nine years ago, I thought that was a lot of money. And now we're talking six hundred thousand bucks. Seems like an awful lot of money. But I don't know how long the road is, so I mean, I mean, ignorant as far as that, but I thought it, years ago, a hundred and twenty-five a foot was kind of expensive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anything else on that issue? Thank you, Scott. Have a, Happy Father's Day to you. He's got, they've got it from five months, if you have it from five months ago, just updated.
Five months ago, we got a price.
Mr. Hurley, can you speak in the microphone?
Lock into the mic. That was three hundred thousand, three months ago, or five months?
About five months ago.
Just find the report, if it's valid and it's within the last six months, it's good enough for us to use to go talk to the people from the county. And so we needed to put on some kind of form that looks official and blah, blah, blah. So we don't look like we don't know what we're doing. Okay? So let's work on that. Action agenda, golf driving range mat. I guess that'd be you, Jimmy?
Motion.
We need a motion in a second. Motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, thank you. Jimmy?
Good morning, supervisors. Jimmy Murphy, Golf Course Superintendent. So we had a, I think, fifty-five in there originally, that's the actual cost. He is probably eight months out. They're doing, he does Michigan, Ohio, and Florida, I believe. But if we want to do it, we need to get it on the books for the fall or the spring. We would have an additional probably fifteen hundred, two thousand, we can do it in-house as far as doing the border around the actual mat there. He's doing all the prep work.
Well, this, this right now is currently part of the proposed capital budget for this coming year. So it's listed in there at fifty thousand.
Correct.
So I guess what he's asking for, because everything's such a time delay, if we'd like to get it done this year, like in October, we need to react to it now or not. Any board comments or questions?
I think we need to get it on the agenda.
Anybody else?
For the fall.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we do fall?
Yes, I, the only thing that Cory asked is that we just give him a date that we can commit to, even if it's thirty or forty-five days out. Because right now, he is traveling all over the place, and, and they're, they're pretty busy doing a lot of it.
How long does this take to install approximately?
Probably two weeks, a week.
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Because you know what would be ideal? Since deer run's not going to be done most likely until October the fifteenth, that if we started this on October the first, when we reopen deer, we'd have the situation addressed. And that would be in next year's budget as well.
That's a good idea. So can we do October one as our date?
I, I can call Cory and get a commitment. If, if we agree on it, then we can just do an intent.
Okay.
For October, November.
You said, you said that you guys, I didn't get that part. It's thirty-two, two-fifty without, is that including installation or not?
That is installation, that's prep work, that's the aggregate and everything underneath it.
What were you saying still needs to be done?
So the border, the brick papers around the outside to create the edge around it so there's not any broken edges. So, you know, when you walk on it right now, when you walk up to it, you have a brick edge around it, and it's just cleaner that way. There's no folds on it.
And that would be something we would do or they would do?
Yes, we would do it. We can do it.
So the total cost would be what?
Maybe another fifteen hundred dollars, whatever the brick papers cost.
So thirty-five thousand will get us the whole thing?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from the board?
So we're talking thirty-five?
Pardon me?
Thirty-five thousand.
Thirty-five thousand is what you're saying. Any?
It's something we... I'm not necessarily that much on the driving range, so is, this is something that we need?
Yes.
Yes.
What, what it would do, Craig, is allow you to extend it further, where we wouldn't have as many balls even near the road, and we would angle it back towards...
It also, let me, let me take from a golfing standpoint, because I use the driving range quite a bit. What happens is, it gets all ripped up and there's no place to go. If, when, when you have those mats, you can put everybody on those mats and give the grass also time to heal. So it becomes a quicker process and the grass comes back a lot quicker, as opposed to always being on it and it just gets ripped up.
Well, and when we have the, I'm sorry, Craig, go ahead.
That's okay.
I said, okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, but the biggest thing is when you have your minor league tour here and stuff, and they hit a lot of balls, we make them hit off the mats.
Yeah, there's a special event, the kid, like the college kids, you have to make them hit off the mats as opposed to ripping up the grass.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a win-win. I, I wish we would have done it when we put the other half in, but...
I, I'll, I'll get a commitment from Cory and see if October's a good date from him, and then I'll get back with you on that.
Well, let's, let's see if we're going to go with it. Is there any public comments on it?
I have a question.
Talking to the microphone, please.
What's the lifespan?
Mr. Hurley, talking to the microphone.
What's the lifespan on this?
Probably ten to twelve years. I mean, the main thing is keep the weather off of it.
Okay. So ten, twelve years, and we won't have to hear it again?
No.
Okay, that's good.
And you said, any other board comments?
The thing to do is keep the weather off of it, what?
It, it, it just, basically, it depends... It, it just basically, it depends. So really, a lot of these mats that we had at some of our other clubs, Craig, we used to actually go out and top dress these mats. And then you have a broom that you go back and that is, it's kind of like a screen on it. I mean, when Corey gets here, we'll talk to her a little bit more, but we actually had brushes that we'd go out and beat these. And that's the thing with the synthetic turf is that it actually gets top dressed and maintained. So.
Public comments? How you doing, Jimmy?
Bill North, President, again, on the, on the golf mat, we know what happened to the other golf mat. Somebody took a slice out of it. I mean, it looks terrible. I mean, how can anybody be so terrible? Anyhow, what I suggested before, what I suggested before to have either cameras out there or have camera signs to scare them off. Because you know, a simple little sign on the bucket return that said, please return the buckets instead of disappearing with them. Well, guess what? That bin is almost filled all the time. Maybe people just take instructions that they have to read it. So if they saw a sign up there that says, cameras in action, maybe some of this baloney that goes on with people going out there picking up golf balls, people stealing golf balls, and people just not doing the right proper thing. I appreciate if it was done. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. By the way, Mr. Herrick said he'd be over at 2 o'clock to hit off the mats in your backyard. Are there any other public comments? All right, I think so, I would like now to vote on this to see if we want to do it or we want to pass on it.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve. Yeah, there's been a motion.
There's been a motion, so now, now we just come down to the actual vote.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
No.
President Brooks?
Yes. Okay, Jimmy, you will get back to us?
Yes, sir.
If, if that date works, we'll, we'll shoot for October the 1st. And when we get the capital, we'll reduce it to 35,000. Utility rates and fees, that would be Chris.
Yes, good morning. And this is a very preliminary draft that I wanted to get the concepts out to you. We had a few, few delays put together because of the delays in the audit, and we are, we are fine tuning some of the numbers on the loans. But basically, when you look at the first page and it just said, rate, rate adjustments necessary to reflect cost to operations and capital funding, support the issuance of new debt, and maintain adequate fund balances. We looked at some of the key assumptions on page three, and that, that is really looking at anticipated capital funding of 13.6 million over a six-year period. The big part of that is a bank loan to fund the meter replacement project and also ballpark about $9 million to the SRF project. And that, that amount isn't in stone yet either because we haven't received the facilities plan, but that's the number we're plugging in. And big things too, under page four, key forecast assumptions, what we built into this was a transfer to the general fund of 2.5% of the annual system revenues. And you could call that a franchise fee. But basically, there are 26 local governments in Florida that in one way or another, from 2% to 13%, provide revenue back to the general fund as a cost of doing business. The utility operates in the district's right of ways, so that's the concept of it. But it, it gives a pretty stable number and a contribution that the general fund can use to budget for. And we also put in a transfer to the capital improvement fund, the 10% of the annual system revenues, which basically is a set aside for R and R and capital needs. So it's really like taking 10% of your revenues and putting it in a savings account. And the next page is just some of the numbers on improvements and where that money's going. And again, these, these will all be fine tuned over the next couple of weeks. The funding sources, revenue sufficiencies on page seven kind of shows that we would be under what we need by 2027. And on page nine, it shows if we bring it up, you know, meeting that need. But the big thing is, and I'll, I'll want to highlight this, is on page eight, we have some of these recommended rate adjustments. And it basically shows sewer going up 4% a year, zero increase in the water rates, but that's going to change slightly. But the big impact in what it's showing you is, is the bill now where somebody at 5,000 gallons pays 4,850. Yes, it's 4%, but you're talking a dollar and 18 cents. It, it sounds a lot. And if you look at over the five years, you're going from 4,850, you know, to $54, so about $6 over that six-year period. And the, the next item I think is important too is looking at residential consumption on page 11. And we have a number of surrounding utilities in the area, and we are in the process of adding Avon Park and Sebring, but their rates are higher than us. And when you look at it, we have the lowest utility rates in the area. And if we move forward, even with the projected increase at this point, we'll still have the lowest utility rates in the area. I think we're going to be adding a couple minor items on, on the water to bring this up some, but we'll still be in the bottom 20% of utilities in the entire area on our rates and fees. And I know some people like to be the lowest. It doesn't work good on operations and capital and capital improvements and repair and replacement. So.
But the two and a half, if I'm, the two and a half percent provides us the revenue that we need?
Yes, sir, for right now with that projected.
We don't know yet. We haven't done that yet. Here's, here's.
That's what this is. Isn't that what that chart's supposed to tell us?
Yes. And, and we're putting those into actual numbers in the budget. Like I, I can't tell you right now in, in this report, we do have it because we used it to generate that data, but we'll bring it back on July 8th and show you exactly how many dollars it generates. So.
It's a ballpark.
Well, I'm getting two and a half percent is very minor.
What he's going to, what I've asked, this is just a beginning. What I've asked Chris to do at the next meeting will be to prepare a piece of paper that gives all these comparisons of who's using what, including Avon Park and Sebring, with his recommendations on what we should be raising ours to and what the dollar implications are of those, of raising them. Then we can take that and compare it to our needs and make a decision accordingly.
And, and we're showing here again, you know, the budget for the utility, but it doesn't have the number to plug into the overall district's budget.
Remember, we still have, the, the bottom line for us, and we'll get into it later with the budget, is if, if, if indeed we have to borrow what we think we have to, and indeed if it's going to cost us what we think it has to, we have to have about a little over $1,050,000 in five years, more than we have today, of available monies to spend. Whether we do that through assessments, we do it through rate increases, that's what we still have to decide.
What was the amount, Ray? Ray, I'm sorry. What was the amount in five years?
Speak into your mic, please.
What was the amount? I didn't.
The ballpark number we're running with right now is $6 million for storm waters, drainage.
Yeah.
And $10, $10 million for the water plant. And Chris has looked up on an amortization, I can never say that word correctly, chart that if that would run us a little over $1 million a year for 20 years. But I could tell you, the only number we have for sure is what we're going to decide today on the drainage situation. We don't know about the plant yet, what it's going to cost. I'm guessing, we're guessing 10, it could come in at 8. And that changes the numbers dramatically. So we don't have that number yet. So until we get the firm numbers, we really can't decide, but it's going to be somewhere around $1 million that we're going to have to have more in five years than we have today.
Oh, I agree. Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
And, and part of, part of this too, and we're outlining it, and you could put it all together as the budget, but the utility fund's an enterprise fund, and what you're going to do with art, the money is impact, the customer rates, the facilities plan we're talking about in stormwater, that's straight general fund and assessment based. So, and there's also some forces at work too with labor costs going up and the chemical costs going up, and you know, that, that you can't do anything about. And, and to give you a quick reality check on it, we started bringing our salaries up with some of our utility workers, you know, across the board and asked for some new positions. And while we were pulling this information, I'm talking to him, he said, well, they just poached a worker from Sebring because for their utility trainees, they went up to 1,650 starting salary.
For a trainee.
Yep. And we're paying a lot of our people, brought it up to 1,450. So I'm going to be looking at making some adjustments in this budget because otherwise we're back to that giving people a year or so of training them, and they're just going to go down the street to make $4,000 more a year. Yeah, it's, it's a big reality check. And as you know, with pipe and equipment and valves and, and that stuff's all gone up 20, 25%. It, it's shocking, but we are in a good spot because we have the lowest rates in the area. And even if we bring our rates up, it's going to be a moderate increase, a very affordable increase. And luckily, we're, we have room to move up and still be in the, the bottom 20% of charges. So.
Okay.
With a lot of forces at work, and we'll bring a, a more complete draft and the impact of the overall budget to you on July 8th.
Yeah. So that's what we're going to decide on July 8th. This is just an FYI, take a look at it, digest it. Are there any questions on that for Chris from the board? Any public comments other than what we've heard? All right, let's go on to stormwater facilities plan for the SRF funding. That's Chris, you again.
Sure. I'll bring that up. We, we brought this to the board.
Chris and Drew. Drew. Oh, yeah. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. That's between you and whichever one of you guys want to do this.
You can continue with where you started.
Okay. Well, at the, at the last meeting, we brought this draft forward and there were several options on it, and the board provided some direction to us to put that figure at $6 million for the facilities plan. And the board isn't taking a commitment to borrow the money at this time. All we're doing, asking today is to approve this plan and set a public hearing date for July 8th. And at that point, if the board approves it and adopts a resolution, that report is transmitted to the DEP in Tallahassee, and they go through their review and make a recommendation to their next funding meetings in August. And if it's approved at that meeting, they send an agreement back to us. And it's at that point, the loan terms are put in and you would move forward. And we'll do again, an amortization schedule, and there is for the general fund, but it would be a 20-year loan for that $6 million to rehabilitate the stormwater system. And the interest rates are still low with the SRF, and there was a huge infusion in federal money. Stormwater rates aren't as low, the wastewater rates are still like 0.03% for the SRF. And the stormwater's a little bit higher, but it's still, you can't borrow the money commercially like that. But that, that's where it'll go and where the rubber will hit the road. So this is just approving the plan that we put the public hearing, we do the resolution and send it off to DEP.
Okay. I know there were changes that you have made.
Correct.
Based on, I think, what the board kind of decided. Do you want to just review those changes real quick?
Yes, they, they all happened, I think it started on page 21 with our alternatives, or that was our main area of discussion at the last board meeting. We put everything back in the, in the proper order, and y'all decided to cap it at the $6 million, which happened to coincide with the additional ditch cleaning work. So I revised everything to show that's, that was going to be our selected alternatives. I think officially, they get selected during the public, I think that's the proper word. The public hearing technically is the official selection. That's where this would be, because this document is technically a living document until we're done with public hearings and everything, until it gets submitted. So we're officially going to pick all these, which we already have, so we can technically update it at the public hearing, like if something happens or if the public is, we get a lynch mob and they come in and tell you, we don't want to do all of this, it could change up until that point. But right now, it, it shows all of the, the updated numbers and figures for the $6 million selection. I've emboldened the individualized paragraphs that we decided to pick, which is, I rearranged everything to option two as our selected alternatives for each four locations, and then updated the, the final summary sheet of all the selected plans on page 25 to reflect all of those selected plans. And then, of course, I, I changed out the, on page 26, the, the totalization of all the work and the summary of the numbers and cost figures, updated that. Million dollars. And then also the, the appendix sheets, I rearranged those, so we brought the $6 million to appendix eight for the selected plan. That's the general gist of the updates.
I guess, Beverly, you were the one that had a concern. Has your concern been answered?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, good. There any other questions from the board? Any public comments? So correct me now, we are not voting for this until the next meeting or we are voting on this?
You're voting to accept this plan, approve it, and schedule the public hearing for July 8th.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that or do I not vote? Where I did it? Let's vote it.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Thank you, Drew.
You're welcome. Thank you. Very good. Excuse me.
Yeah, and Drew's, Drew's recitation there was correct. This is still a living document. Once the public hearing is made and you, and the, and public makes their opinion, you know, the board can make changes up till that point, but the, the vote of the public hearing is, after the public hearing is what will be final.
Okay. Add-on items? None. Petitions and communications? None. Staff reports, golf.
Gave everybody our written staff report. I am going to try to, Joey and I are going to see if we can get the mini excavator next week. I'm going to try to start working on 18 bunker on deer. We've been kind of busy lately doing the verticut in there, fine. Also gave you the update on irrigation. The two inches, the issue right now, there's 80,000 linear feet of the two inch, sorry, Ray, it's probably under a bunch. So we've been talking to them daily, and there's a bunch of it on train right now getting ready to come, but it's all the big pipe. So the two inches is what's going to hold us up. They're talking July 13th for it. David from Westco Turf called them yesterday and said, if we can get any two-inch to ship it and don't wait till it's all manufactured. So it all started out with the polymer, with the pipe getting it, and then, you know, they're
in California, so they have, they're running at 70% right now. But the rest of it should start showing up next week. So talked to Carl. Carl is going to double up his crew. He says he has 100 people in the state of Florida. He will double up the crew. And that email is actually from Carl and he still thinks he can do October 1. He just didn't want to put it in writing. But he said he will do everything he can to get me finished up in September.
Talk to me about the bunker work on 18 on deer. What are you going to do?
If you guys would like to come out or call me next week, I'll paint it out.
Are we going to take it all around?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to take it all the way back to where our valve is because I don't want to mess with the valve, but it's basically the width of the green. And then I'm going to bring it up the back of the slope a little bit where it'll catch the ball up top. And then I'm going to take it down by the ball kid where it'll be open a little bit where the ball won't run through or off the ball kid or the sand won't wash into the lake as well. So we're going to try to get started on that as quick as we can. So that being said, you know, I think it allows me an opportunity to verticut turtle again and reopen deer for a couple of weeks. I mean, if you guys are all right, I'd like to do that. They're getting a little thick over there, but just like to, if I could get a couple of days on turtle to verticut, that would be good. Top dress it and reopen it. So talking to Carl last night, he feels like July 5th will be his date. So I'll keep you up to date on that as quick as I find out about the two inch. The rest of it's on a train coming from California.
I thought, obviously I was wrong. I thought we bought all the materials. Didn't we deal with this months ago?
We bought all the Toro products, Mr. Brooks. We bought all the Toro product. We bought all the accessories from Toro. The pipe, we agreed to lock in the price and did the letter, or did the commitment to purchase, but they won't stockpile it. And then like I said, it's petroleum-based product, so it's going all over the place. Carl said for the last four months, all he's done is moved two inch from job to job, shipping it himself.
Okay, well, if you're changing dates, which is fine.
Yes.
We knew you might have to do this. I want you to resend out an updated list of what the new dates are.
Yes, sir.
Because I believe everybody's been told deer is closing for
Yeah, I've been looking at my back window.
For the season. So if it's changing, that's fine, just let's make sure we notify everybody.
Right.
Including us.
You guys all right with us reopening it back up for a couple of weeks as well, right?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, whatever needs to be done. I am concerned personally about turtle.
Excuse me?
I am concerned about turtle that it's not being closed down to do any work on. No. We usually close turtle four weeks during the summer on and off to do work on it.
Well, like I said, it worked out where I verticut before, when we had deer open, I verticut it. So it's, I mean, we did, we closed it down for the aerification and the verticut and everything else, what, three weeks ago?
No, I'm fine with opening deer and closing turtle to do more work on it is basically what I'm saying.
Yes.
I was concerned that we weren't doing that and it hurt the cost. I look at turtle like number 11 on the left from basically the tee box all the way up to the green. I mean, that, that's just
The wear by the wood line?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's terrible. I mean, so if you're closing down, maybe there's something you can do during that. I also look at five on the right side by the water bed. It's horrible. I mean, so there is work that needs to be done on turtle. If you need, if this works out and you can close it, have deer open and do some, you know, positive work on it, that would be great.
We're doing our best we can.
That was my concern. That, one of the things that I thought I noticed this week is that the holes were the same probably through the weekend and all the way through Tuesday and the edges around the hole were basically dead. I don't know how often there's changing holes, but I think we need to change them more. You can't ignore turtle just because you're busy or no on deer.
No, sir, we haven't. We change them Monday, Wednesday, Friday is our days right now.
Just
Richard Gar-
I disagree with you.
Well, Craig, so I'm not arguing, I'm just saying, we have pin placements now in the pro shop, so we can show you the rotations we've done. So if we start on a one on Monday, then it goes to a two and a three. So I mean, we've been changing them, but they get changed every three days. So like today, I believe it was a pin three or whatever and then so Monday
I'm not, I'm talking the actual hole.
That's, I can't change that pin placement on the sign without changing the hole.
True, true.
So that's what I'm saying. I have, it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday right now. We haven't missed a day, sir. Richard Garcia cuts them. He's a member here. And then Darryl Holt's the other one.
He's a good golfer, too.
From what I understand, he had five birdies yesterday and shot 73 or whatever.
Yeah, I play with him. I do have a, are there any other questions for these guys about?
And Craig, I did order some new drops area signs. Can I ask you guys a question on this? Now, Andy and I had a discussion on this yesterday. All right, so here's my belief. So they've been putting it on the approach on number two. All right, so that doesn't, that really shouldn't be that way. The only person that should really get a drop inside the Aqua tee would be somebody playing the Aqua tee. Other than that, I believe everybody should drop on the red tee. And that's where
Which hole are you on?
Number two turtle.
They didn't have the signs.
Well, there was there Monday and somebody must have thrown it. So we took the one off 18.
Somebody didn't like what you did. That's all. That's what they do here. They change it themselves.
I played Monday and the drop signs on Monday when I played about
I know, that's what I said, but it was gone yesterday or whatever day.
That's the legal drop, you have to take them back.
I agree.
What do you think they should do?
On the red tee.
On the reds.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So that's where I put it back and then I guess somebody didn't like it, so they either chunked it in the water or did some, I don't know. There's one back there now, right now, and it's on the red tee.
Somebody didn't like it? Okay.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Mike, you got anything? Before? Oh, is it? I didn't look at it. I'm sure it's very... Any questions for these guys besides what I want to ask? I got a question. On your weekly report that you sent out, why, why in the first week of the month would you estimate that you're going to overspend your expenses by $30,000?
That was the increase, that was the increase in price for that bulk furt app that we approved through the board. And in fact, it's actually when it comes out next week.
Increase of what?
The bulk, the bulk furt app that we told you about, the price increased by, what was it, the percentage?
Eighty-nine percent.
Yeah.
We voted on that.
Yeah.
And approved it.
And those expenses have been actualized and it didn't quite, it wasn't quite that high, so it'll be adjusted in next week's report.
Okay, if we vote or I didn't remember. Let me ask you about Tanglewood. You sent out an email saying that the rates for Tanglewood currently, or I guess at $24 and the current resident rate is 27. Is that, I mean, that's your email?
Yeah, that's correct.
So what, what would happen in November? What, so every, the rates always fluctuate, correct?
Right.
Is there always a $3 difference or is it?
It's probably not exactly a $3 difference, no. It's, but it's probably not too far from that. Those rates are fairly close to each other all year round.
And do we, do we publish the resident rate? I don't remember.
Yes.
But we don't publish the Tanglewood rate?
No, the Tanglewood rate is not published, that's just, that's like a league rate.
Why, and I know we've had this conversation before and obviously I missed it. Why are we giving Tanglewood lower than the residents?
Well, first off
Before you answer, I could swear that a couple of years ago, we said not to do that, but I probably am wrong.
So, well, first, first, Tanglewood folks are considered residents. If they come out on their own, on their own date and play on their own, just booking tee time, they're paying the resident rate. But the Tanglewood as a league, they guarantee us so many players twice a week throughout the year, that's why they get a price break for that, for guaranteeing us that play. It's the same thing you would do with a tournament or other leagues or groups that we have.
It's a lot of lost revenue.
Or not. I mean, if they're not, if we were, if you, to me, it's not lost revenue, to me, it's guaranteed revenue. If you, if you charge them X amount more or whatever, they'll go play somewhere else, you know? They'll move for a dollar. I've lost Tanglewood in the past from where I was before to Sunning Lake over a dollar. They will move. I mean, it's guaranteed revenue in an eight o'clock shotgun that's hard to fill.
What are group rates at the other courses?
Well, Tanglewood has a group rate at all the other courses. I do not know what that is.
Well, they have a group rate here.
Correct. They have a group rate here and it fluctuates throughout the year.
How many, how many members, players do they guarantee?
Well, it changes throughout the year. Obviously, it's more in season and less in the summer.
Changes by what? A month, a week?
In the fall, it starts to increase, so when you go through November and December, it goes up and then January through March is when they're at their highest, when they probably got 30 to 40. I could probably print a report for you, an actual report of how many came each week.
My question being, if they guarantee you 40 and they show up for 30, with 38, do they pay you for 40?
No.
No. I can, I don't have the exact agreement. I can, I can provide that to you. I don't know it off the top of my head, but if you would like to know what that is, I will have Andy put it together and send it to you.
What's the difference in the money? The rates? What's the rates?
It's currently, it's $3 different.
All right. So you're talking 40 players times three?
For the difference, yeah. But I mean, that's, that's, you know, common practice in the golf business. I mean, if you have groups, you do group rates to guarantee them coming.
But if they don't meet the minimum, are we charging them?
Well, I'm not sure if they aren't meeting the minimum. I don't know what their agreement is. I'll have to go see Andy and see what that agreement is to see what it is they do.
It should be penalized.
Correct. So let me get with Andy, I'll see what their, I'll see their agreement for what they have and I will give it to you.
Are there any other groups that
Yes.
That we give, that pay less than $27?
I don't, I
Or is Tanglewood the only exception?
Tanglewood, Tanglewood may be the only one that's below the resident rate. We do have other groups that are non-residents. Like I said, Tanglewood is a resident group and they do get group rates in season, that's, but I believe they're at or above our resident rate. I could provide those for you too, if you would like.
How about the lead, Mike? What, what's their rate?
Summer, the Tuesday night summer league?
The summer, yeah.
So they play nine holes, it's 11 or $12.
Okay, so that's pretty much.
Yeah, but that's a good time.
Yeah, that's, which is more, that's, that's more than the twilight rate, really.
Right.
Mike, several years ago, my only complaint wasn't what you were charging, it was that I knew for a fact that there was four or five players that weren't Tanglewood people playing in that group. And I'm sure it's still going on. That's the problem I have because all of a sudden, friends with friends and they don't have to live in Tanglewood, they come over here and play in the Tanglewood group and get that rate. Now, I don't have the answer to that, other than I asked someone at the time not to check IDs, but I don't know if you want to do that. I mean, it's three bucks or they shouldn't even be able to play in it, but it's not like it's
But if they're not Tanglewood
But they're not, I mean, it's
Then they should be paying even more than
Right, they shouldn't be able to play, but
So Michael
I don't want to tell them what
Just get this straight from me, just get this straight from me because I'm, these guys, they're all over the place, all right? What is the rate to play with Tanglewood and do they have to live in Tanglewood? I think that's what Michael's saying.
For sure. I'm unaware, I mean, I'm unaware of any specific incidents where if somebody has a guest and they come and pay that, that rate, I'll be happy to follow up on that. I mean, I'm not out there every Tuesday and Thursday morning checking their roster, but I'm happy to look into that and see what the, what the deal is of that. I'll get their agreement. I can forward that to you to see what their agreement is. But it is, I mean, what we're doing is common practice. I mean, we're filling a eight o'clock shotgun Tuesday and Thursday morning, that's
Is this all based on them getting the lowest price possible or is it based on, I mean, what is it based on? If I told you, take the membership rate and reduce that to 24, what would Tanglewood say?
Say that again? The member?
If I asked you or if we discussed taking the member rate that's currently 27
The resident rate.
Down to the Tanglewood rate, which is 24, what would happen?
I don't think that would really bother them much. I think it's more of them comparing what our rate is to other courses. And when I first, when I first got here in Sebring, and like I said, I was at another course for nine years, we had, we had the Tanglewood group on Tuesday morning at that club and they were here Thursday morning over here. Well, I went up a dollar on them and that's why they're here Tuesdays and Thursdays now. So they're not afraid to move for a dollar.
I would prefer one rate. I don't care how you get to it. But why do we have to have, why do I tell the residents, here's the lowest rate and then here's Tanglewood paying less? How do you justify that?
Well, it's, like I said, they're guaranteeing us, they're bringing their group here every Tuesday and Thursday in an eight o'clock shotgun. It's, I mean, that's common practice in the golf business to do that.
The membership's guaranteeing you a million dollars every year in what we pay.
Correct, and, well, the, right, well, the member, the average member
They have to have a minimum number that you supposedly bring.
Correct, so again, I don't
Are they making that?
Sure, so I don't know what their agreement is off the top of my head. I didn't look into that, but I'd be happy to do that and follow up with you.
I mean, are they looking for a good price or are they looking for a price that's below anything else that we have?
They shop at everything.
Yeah, they're going to shop.
What are they shopping? I mean, right now, what's our, what's our regular rate if you come in off the street?
It's over, it's over, it's over 30.
It's over 30?
Right.
And they're paying 24? That's pretty good.
And the resident rate's 27. That's just a resident calling up and booking a tee time in the, you know, at 11 o'clock or playing in one of your member groups.
And that's cart and everything?
Yes. Everything we do is cart.
Do they use any of their own carts?
Tanglewood has, there is a couple of members that play in the Tanglewood group.
Right.
They are allowed to use their own cart, but you cannot use your own cart unless you are a club member.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels. I think one price, I don't know why we discount off of the resident rate. If the resident rate's too high, lower it.
I don't
I don't, in my
I don't know how much the resident rate is even used. How much is it used?
It's used a lot.
A lot.
A lot?
Yeah, no, just, we're good.
I wouldn't change it. It would not, I would not recommend changing what we do.
At least don't lose rate.
You would just, I just think you're talking out of both sides of your mouth. Here's the resident rate, it's the lowest rate possible for people living here, but Tanglewood's going to get a lower.
Well, Mr. Gilpin, you told me you ran a group in Indiana, right? And you went club to club?
I'm talking super
You shot prices, right, for your group? Because you had a group and clubs would give you a reduced rate?
We actually beat up the pros every
Absolutely. So if a club wanted to have your group come to their course, they would give you a deal, correct?
Right.
That's just how it operates. That's just how you, that's how you do, that's, that's, that's just how it works. Yeah.
Let's see if they're abiding by the contract.
Yeah, I'll follow up with that for sure.
If we up the rate, what are we going to lose? I mean, you're saying that they'll leave for a dollar. How many golfers and how many days are we losing these people?
They're here two days a week. I mean, you're talking a lot of revenue. I can give you, I can give you a full year's worth of revenue.
I mean, that's what we got to look at.
It's tens of thousands of dollars. It's tens of thousands of dollars.
You also got to look at what's right and what's wrong.
I may, I actually may have that data back there.
All right, fine. I just wanted to bring it up. I had somebody ask me, I, obviously, it sounds like the board's not interested in pursuing it.
I want to see what they're doing with the contract.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's the biggest issue is if there's a contract in play, we need to make sure they're abiding by it.
Is there, there is a contract?
I'll, yes, I will follow up with the contract.
All right, at the next meeting, bring us the contract and All right, at the next meeting, bring us the contract and
Yeah, I'll send it to you ahead of time, and then we can discuss it if you want.
Discuss it the next meeting.
I'd like to know, are they adhering to the contracts? Are they bringing as many golfers as they say they are?
Absolutely. So we'll we'll follow up on both of those.
All right. Any other issues on that? Any other questions for Mike? Public? I lost my track.
That was gone.
Who's next?
I think Ariel.
Ariel.
Good morning, supervisors. I also provided a written staff report to a couple of updates. A couple of updates to that. Um, under the Human Resources Department for Recreation, um, I had that we had a recreation attendant vacancy, which we do not have anymore. That position has been filled. However, as you know, Kelly's resignation is effective for July the eighth, so we will be um taking a look at the organizational chart and making adjustments from there to see what positions, how they kind of fall and what we need to be filling for moving forward. So until then, we're working on making sure we've got everything covered before she heads out of state.
Ariel, are are you planning on replacing Kelly?
I'm gonna take a look at the organizational chart and see um if that's what the best route to go is, whether it's replace that position or because obviously what was shown in the organizational chart that you saw before was that we were going to have the um Kelly potentially moving up into that um Community Services Director position. And then having like a a lead um recreation attendant, if you will, somebody to handle the operations and the scheduling and some of that nature to keep that building operational. In my opinion, I think that's still the best route to go. Um, that seems to make the most sense to me from a staffing standpoint. I would still like to go that route. Um, so but we will reconvene on that.
That's fine. I just I just didn't know what your plans were, so.
Yeah, sorry. Okay, yes, that's much better.
And I'd just like to personally thank Kelly for her work effort during especially during the transition that we had. I mean, you guys were jumping through hoops trying to keep things operational, and we're gonna miss you.
Absolutely. Could not agree with you more. Thank you. So um the next update is with regards to the community newsletter. On each of your desks, I left um a very rough draft of what we've been working on from a design standpoint. Um, just a note on that, that I've sent a couple edits to be made in addition to that, so that doesn't reflect that. Couple of just wordsmithing changes. Um, in addition to that, I feel like we're gonna need a little bit more space. So um I'm working with the um design agency to see how we can kind of reconfigure some of this to add additional space into that. Well, well, it's all placeholder. That's that's obviously not a community update, so it that is just to show that there's text there. So pretend that that is very relevant text from a very good newsletter that you will be receiving when the quarterly newsletters go out. That is more to give you an idea from a design standpoint.
Is this four pages? Or is this just an idea?
It would be a it's. Look at it from a design standpoint, is what I'm telling you, because the layout's gonna change, because I think we're gonna need more space for community updates, project updates, things of that nature. I think that by the time you actually put content in there, it's we're gonna need just a bit more space. So we're working on it from a layout standpoint, but wanted to show you kind of from a design standpoint where we're at, what we're looking at. Um, that is gonna be a trifold. The way that that's laid out is it's gonna be a trifold mailer. Um, in the staff update that I gave as well, I gave you an idea of of costs and what that would look like to mail that particular piece.
You're gonna you're gonna need eight pages. If you're gonna do this right, which I assume we would want to. I mean, there's nothing in here. For example, I mean, board president, I guess that's okay. The GM should certainly have a say so. There should be something in here from the restaurant.
I I there is a Yes, there there's a space for recreation. There's a space for golf and restaurant on there as well. As I said
Space is
Yes, I agree, which is why I said I'm working with them on a different layout so that we can add more space, because I don't feel like the space that's shown there is adequate.
Right. I think you have to expand the number of pages.
Yes, I agree. That's what I'm working on.
And I'm thinking at least eight, really. That's what you're gonna need. If you want to if you want to inform the people, the residents, what's going on. I mean, you need you need a whole page like for a calendar of events. You need a whole page for restaurant specials and restaurant, what they're doing. Something from the chef from
And you want this, you want this, you want this to go out monthly?
No, quarterly. It's only. Yeah, yeah. It's only gonna go out quarterly. It's gonna go out four times a year, right?
It's gonna be on the website.
It is. So one of the things that we had kind of talked about with that design company is because of the insane cost of doing an individual mailer, I think that with the new website design, there's a really good way to incorporate the calendar of events, for instance, because it's going out once a quarter. So what you what that would mean is I would have or whoever would have to have the exact detail of every event that happens in three months from now. In a perfect world, that's the way that it seems like it would happen, but that's not the way that it works when you're doing events, when you're adding vendors or something happens and we have to change this. So to put a calendar of events out three months ahead of time, I think I don't know that that would work. Because because if I put it out and it's got a Zumba class on it and the Zumba class is canceled and you got it three weeks ago, you're gonna be beating on our door wanting to know why there's no Zumba because you saw it in the newsletter three months ago.
That makes sense.
Just change the website.
We we're in the middle of changing the website, so
No, no, no. You change what's on the website.
And we will, yeah.
The mailing is what we have at the time that it goes out.
Okay.
I mean, that's that's how I look at it. Changes have how it's gonna happen. They're gonna happen. That's why you have. That's why you're putting it on the website, I assume.
That's why we're putting it on the website. One of the comments that I added in that design element was to put in um a a section where it says to view a calendar of events that include recreation, this, this, and this. Please visit our website here.
Put an asterisk subject to change.
Yes, and and we do. We actually do that on our calendar of events now because it changes all the time.
How are we using the? How are we using the the board on twenty-seven? Do you guys use that at all?
Yes, I believe Chris, you've been. Chris has put quite a number of um pieces out. I think that there was some information with regards to the board seat. So yes, I do believe that that is being utilized, yes.
So could we use that after the change? Or I mean, I don't know how if we can get on it and get off it. I mean, you know, just an hour to have it on. I mean, you know.
I think I think that if it was a matter of a change to the calendar of events, it would be most pertinent um to change either on the website or to put in an email blast, because it's going to more so than it's going to affect oncoming traffic on twenty-seven or just Highlands County as a whole. It affects the residents of Sun and Lake. So that would be the the most direct contact that we would be able to deliver that to them.
And I'll make a comment with the uh one of the reasons we also got Fish Slapped involved is putting together a newsletter is one thing. Putting together a newsletter that looks good in a digital format online and also on one of those digital signs is a different product. So when we have that product in a digital format with the newsletter, we can make changes to it. We can port it over to that's the sign people and they can use that content and update and put whatever we want on it, restaurant, et cetera. And the big thing is, again, you want to continue to mail them out in the utility bill, or do you want to have a hundred of them available to residents? And otherwise, it's online. And and I bring that up because most of them, I think, end up going in the trash when they go out with the utility bill. Um, it is very costly and uh, you know, there's some hidden costs in there. Like right now, the the postage for the utility bill goes up because that newsletter's in it and the utility department's absorbing it. I don't plan to continue doing that. I plan to have the general fund assess for that postage if you continue.
So
Doesn't matter what fund it comes
So, Chris, what you're saying is, just so I'm on, all right, is not send it out, uh, put it on um and then just keep a hundred in the office. People can pick up themselves.
The office over and at the clubhouse and
The clubhouse, right.
Yeah.
And then we can eliminate mailing, right?
Right.
Well, what's wrong? It was on the website and we keep a hundred in the office. What's wrong with that?
We can add them
Why waste the money?
Why waste the money to have a hundred in the office? Just put it on the website and call it a day.
There are some people that like it printed. I would say not many. I I will tell you for every event that we work doing the socials or anything where we've got the public coming in. We've been doing the socials, the ice cream socials for years. Years, and it inevitably you'll get somebody say, oh, this is my first time here. We said, oh, you know, we do them every month. Oh, yeah, yeah, we put it in the newsletter. Oh, that thing that comes with the utility bill? I throw that away.
And that's true.
Nine times out of ten.
She's right.
You're talking out of both sides of your mouth.
No, I'm not. I what I'm telling you is I think this is a waste of money. Honestly.
The whole intention was to let the people know what's going on. Nobody. You guys all are confident. Just a second. You guys are that confident that everybody's looking at the website? Are you guys that confident?
Not me, because I don't.
We do a very good job at notifying the golf membership. We do a horrible job of notifying anybody who's not. That's where I'm coming from.
Do you? I don't agree to that.
The piece that we send out in the bills now, we've talked about it, is more advertising than it is content.
It is. It's too frequent. There's not enough and there's not enough information to put out every single month, because it's not truly monthly. It's every two weeks, because you have to make it. You have to print it. You have to have it in time to go in a utility bill, so we don't have enough that's circulating every two or three weeks.
All I hear is negatives. If you guys would rather just drop the whole thing, fine, drop it.
As long as it's on the internet.
Huh?
Sorry. I agree. I think it's. Listen, I've been here eight years. I seen I seen them sitting on a counter, right? And then I see him. Uh, I'll come in and then they're in the wastebasket. All right. So you want to know the truth? Right?
I think I think there is the potential to have some printed. I think that we can drop that number from four thousand substantially and have some that are printed in the office, some that are printed in the recreation office. I'm sure Mike would be happy to put some of ours over in golf, so that if you want to grab one, by all means, grab a printed copy. I just don't know that four thousand people are looking at it.
How much is it to print it?
How many homes we got? We don't have four thousand homes.
Well, I can tell you we're printing four thousand right now.
Right, and we've done that.
A month.
Ariel, what's the cost of the print? What's the cost of the printing every month?
Thirty-two hundred.
One thousand nine hundred. No, I'm sorry. One thousand ninety-six dollars, and that does not include the postage, because as Chris mentioned, right now, that postage cost is being absorbed through the utility bills, like in you in the utility fund.
So what would you suggest? How many should we print and where do we put them? Just the places you just said, right?
No, I think I think if we printed five hundred, that would be more than people would pick up.
I agree.
And I could be wrong. I I I could be wrong, and we may have to up the number, but I think if we printed two hundred and fifty to three hundred and put a hundred in each of those three locations, I would be surprised if there weren't some leftover.
If you're if you're gonna print, if you're printing them for people to pick up, I think you're wasting your money.
So
I will do whatever the board directs me to do. I will. Let me. Let me put that caveat out there, but that is my professional opinion.
I guess one thing I would say is if, in fact, we get a newsletter that is a newsletter and we mailed it out, people may read it. The way it is right now, we know what's in there, and as soon as we get it, we toss it for the most part. So if, in fact, we get a good quality newsletter.
It's gonna be on the internet.
Well, it'll be on the internet, but I don't. It could very well be that people will read it if you send it to them. And I'd be willing to try it. And if we get the same kind of response as we got from what we're currently doing, then obviously, we don't need to be doing it.
I don't. I don't think that the people outside of the membership who live in the district will ever look at the look at us online. I mean, they just don't. They're not gonna look at us. The only way you communicate
Do you think that's because they don't care about the information or they're not gonna find it online? Because if if it's a matter of not necessarily being interested in the information, they're not gonna read it either.
If you send it to them and they have to open it, they'll read it. They'll look at it, which is more than they're gonna do. Listen, that's fine. I'll go either way. I think we do a an inadequate job of talk of communicating with anybody but golfers. And golfers, as we all know, are ten percent of the damn population. And that's it. And we give them ninety percent of the attention, and the other people, we say, screw you, sir. To a certain extent. I don't mean it that way.
Yeah, no, I I would disagree with that completely, but I understand what you're trying to convey.
Can I make a motion?
No.
To go well, I'm good anyways.
We're still talking. What's what's your motion, Mike?
And and if we want
Motion to go with Ariel. She's doing the job. If she's telling us to do it, let's try her way this time. Let's try it for a few months. Right, go with the five hundred, whatever. Um, and and see where we are. We're throwing away two or three thousand every month. And I'm telling you right now.
We're spending her. Her budget that she's put here is less than we're spending now.
Well, she won't
Did you did look at it, right?
Yeah.
So here's here's my. Here's my question. I like I said, I don't mind trying sending out the four thousand right out of the gate, because that's it doesn't make a difference on my workload. My question would be, do you have any thoughts on how we would gauge whether or not people are reading it? Other than what, sending out a survey and saying, hi, do you read this?
No, you're never gonna know. You either decide to do this as a community service or you or you don't.
Correct.
I mean, there's no way to gauge.
I will second Mike's motion.
Thank you. I would suggest that we get what we believe to be the final version
Okay.
Of what this is going to look like. And we could probably make a much better decision on whether or not we have something that they think that masses would be like.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Well, we've got two motions.
We got a motion in a second.
Huh?
We have a motion in a second.
Right.
So we can discuss them, and if I'm the correct is is the 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 motion is that Ariel tries printing, having printed copies available, but not to go out, right, not to be mailed out with the with the
With the utility bills.
How how can we possibly vote on that when we don't know what it's gonna look like?
Well, well, with what's been with what's current. I mean, I'm assuming, and like I said, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but my I'm assuming is that every time a utility bill goes out, there's a newsletter that's included with it.
Right, right.
Okay, why the why? If I'm understanding correctly is the motion is to stop that and to have the printed have five hundred cop printed copies available at, you know, different district locations and to stop the practice temporarily
Yeah.
of them being included in the in their utility utility bill mailing.
I'm gonna ask you the same question. How can we vote on that when we don't know what it's gonna look like?
Well
I don't think what it looks like has any thing to do with my vote.
It's been going on. Like I say, it's been going on for how long? You know, how long has the newsletter been being included?
It's not the same newsletter that
No, I understand that. Any newsletter. Right, that's. I think that's the motion is that no newsletter is to be included. We have a newsletter. If even if it's the exact same format that's been going out for the past, you know, however many years, that's available, not to be the the motion is not to be included in the right, utility bill.
Yeah.
So that's the motion in the second.
Okay.
If we vote, are we voting on killing the current newsletter? Is that what is that? Can we separate these?
If you want to make it
That we want to stop the current newsletter in the form that it's in. I think we could all probably agree to that. No? Bad idea?
Well, if we if we want to break it up, if the if we want to say the current motion is, and Mike correct me if I'm incorrect, but the current motion is we're going to stop the newsletter, any newsletter, going out with the utility bill
Right.
on a temporary, you know, I don't know if we want to say one month or if we want to make it temporary or until it's six, three months.
So can I add something here?
Sure, we're just trying to clarify.
Okay, yeah. So just for the sake of clarification, the July newsletters have already been printed. They're ready to be picked up. They're going out in in the utility bill, because the utility bills are getting ready to go out. Um, I would need to confirm the reason that we have continued what we've been doing as we have and not started the quarterly before is because we had existing advertising agreements for the people who were inside the newsletter. If I'm not mistaken, I think that we have one more that is contractually into that August newsletter, which would go out in the month of July, which is why we propose to start the quarterly in September. So what would happen, the way I understood it, based on what we've talked about in previous meetings, is that starting in September is the first time that this new edition would go out. Once that happens, it's quarterly from September on.
Right.
So what I guess I would need clarification on through all of this is the distribution route that the board is wanting me to take.
I don't think we're gonna be ready to do this in September if we do it at all. I don't. I think we're trying to push it.
I don't.
Okay, well, how about that? How about this then? Let's if we're contractually obligated to include
We have to
Advertising. Yes. So let me get with Ariel, and we'll come back at the next board meeting about a potential plan to stop. You know, the the stop including them in the in the
There's no plan. Don't renew any agreements.
We we haven't. We haven't. We've
So there's no plan. You've got one more commitment. You do the commitment.
We have been operating under the plan based on what we talked about at the previous board meetings, which was what I just explained, that we have an advertising agreement that has to go out in August.
If you have a commitment for another newsletter, do it.
That's what our plan currently is.
Well, fine.
I haven't changed that.
Right. What do we have to vote on?
Well, we have a motion in a second. So that's, yeah. But I mean, if you want to withdraw the motion, my recommendation, based on everything that's just come to light, be to withdraw the withdraw the motion. Let me meet with Ariel and come up with a plan for after all this advertising stuff is dealt with.
Yes, and I in that, as I've mentioned, I am working with the design company on a revised layout to give us more space. It is very likely going to change the cost once we do that. So I need to be able to say, we need more space. What's the revised layout look like? What's the cost? And we can go from there. What I will also ask them, just for the sake of comparison, is you clearly have a quote for printing four thousand. My assumption is going to be that printing five hundred is going to be a different cost. I'm sure that there is a discount with the more that you the more that you print. So I will also, if it is permissible, get a quote for printing five hundred so we know what that cost looks like, just so that you have option A, which is sending this layout to four thousand people, and option B, which is printing five hundred and making it available online. If that's agreeable.
Well, when I second the motion, I knew we had contractual stuff until September. So that wasn't in it, but I, you know, we can either vote, because it's either gonna be yes or no. Either way, and and you can bring back. You two can talk, but it just we're too argumentative when stuff doesn't go the way we want it, I guess. I mean, I don't understand this.
Let's vote it.
So let's vote.
Yeah, let's just call the vote. Yeah.
I don't understand the argument.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
No, I don't understand you. I don't understand what you're saying.
Wait, wait, wait.
There's no argument. I'm not arguing.
But tell me okay, we're not arguing.
I'm not.
We're discussing.
If I may, hold it. Let's not. This is not a big issue. Let's not go crazy over it. Let's. Would you please repeat the motion and then we will vote on it?
Okay, so the motion is that we stop sending the newsletter with the utility bill. Correct?
Once the commitments have been made.
Advertising commitments have been addressed.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it.
Can we vote that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Public comment. He's gone.
Anybody? Can we vote that now?
Ready? Ready? Supervisor Herrick?
We're just voting to stop the current newsletter.
After the contractual obligations have been met.
Yes.
No, because I don't understand the whole process here.
Okay, that's fine.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President Brooks?
Yes. Now, if I may, I would like to suggest that Ariel go back, since she even admits that this form that she has showed us is not acceptable. Go back, in her opinion, we need to change it. Whatever your opinion is. Okay, that's your opinion, right?
Okay. My question was going to be, we're just talking about with regards to space and the layout. If you're asking me to completely redo the way that it looks, as in like the design element?
You're gonna bring us a piece that you like. This piece you said is just a starting point, that you aren't happy with it. So I'm saying, go back, come back to us with the piece that you're happy with, that we can look at.
Got it.
And then, once you have that piece, we'll decide if we like it. And if we do, then we'll decide how we'll distribute it. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Any other questions on that issue? Okay. I'll leave it at that. What else do you have?
I think that pretty well does it.
Ariel, I have a question for you and/or Kelly with the food that you're gonna have out here 4th of July. I was over here last year. This year, I'm gonna go back to the clubhouse. But I came over last year, and there was a lot of people here. And I've just... And I apologize for not bringing it up earlier. But we need more trucks. And I hope you're... And there was a lot of people I talked to, and I think I talked to Mike about it, that a lot of people came to eat up there, and they couldn't get in. But that's the way we set it up. So they came over here, and there just was not enough trucks here.
So, yes. And we... Kelly has put out a very large number of feelers. Obviously, these are all independent businesses, so they have to agree to come here and set up for what is a pretty short period of time. Now, granted, all of the trucks that did come left very successful last year. I think with a couple of exceptions, and mostly due to some of them not owning the truck anymore, or not necessarily anything event-related, there are maybe one or two that are not returning. Everyone that was here last year wants to return. Kelly's put out additional feelers and trying to recruit more to come in, but they have to agree, obviously, to bring their business to us. So we can ask, and we definitely have, because it was very well attended last year.
Yeah, I should have... And I apologize. Because it was so busy over here.
It was.
And the lines were...
Yes.
I mean, it was very successful for those that were here.
It was. And they are preparing as well, whether, you know, that be on a staffing or, you know, a supply basis. They're planning for more people, based on the numbers that we had last year as well.
Is the restaurant doing anything?
You gotta talk to him.
Michael? Okay.
Tell him, Mike.
You gotta talk into it.
My question was, you know, what the restaurant was gonna be doing for Mike for that day.
Yeah, and there was. I talked to several people, and they were disappointed that... Because of the lines here, that they couldn't get into the restaurant. And I explained to them... I didn't tell them who I was or what. I just said that it's a closed deal up there.
Sure.
So they came here, and that's why they should be...
Last year, we didn't really know what to expect either, with it being kind of the first year that we were starting back with events, and everything was kind of starting to very slowly open back up. We really weren't sure with the new format, what the turnout would be, and it was very, very good. So we're basing our event plan this year on the fact that we will have a good number of people.
So...
You're open, just for reservations required.
We are... Correct. We are reservation-only. We have a buffet and private seating in the back lawn. We've done that the past two or three years now, and it's been extremely more successful for the restaurant as a business. In the past, we used to try to help out and serve hot dogs and hamburgers. We had... I mean, it was... We had a couple of good years, but if it happens to rain, we just ate 200 hamburgers, 200... I mean, we had a one year where we just went completely backwards. At least in this scenario, where, you know, the people are in... They're coming. They're gonna come eat. We know who's coming. We can control our costs. It's been way more successful for us. Last year was the best Independence Day celebration we've had yet, as far as numbers count.
Well, if you know anybody... Because last year, there wasn't any hot dogs or hamburgers here. It was all other food.
Right.
It was extremely busy here. I can't explain to you how it was. So if you know anybody that sells hot dogs and hamburgers, have them come over here.
I'm sure they know more than I do.
Why don't you guys set up a booth?
Yeah.
I just...
I'm circling or something.
Yeah, well, Fourth of July...
I just... So we did that in the past. We served the hot dogs and hamburgers, and we... So we have to prepare all that stuff. We had to cook 200, 300 hamburgers, 200, 300 hot dogs, and it rained, and nobody came. That's all in the trash. And we had to have all that extra... It's... It just... Believe me, it was a total mess. What we're doing now is, by far, not even close, is way better for our business.
Just an idea to do more revenue.
Right.
Can I ask a question? What vendors are coming here? Do you have a list?
Yes, sir. Actually, I sent out an email yesterday that had the vendors...
Well, my email just got fixed yesterday, so I'm...
You'll be able to see it.
It even comes to my phone.
And this morning, we added one more vendor that committed to us, and it's the Arepa truck. That's... It's kind of like empanadas and things like that. It goes over really well here.
Shall we do this? Let's skip ahead to Dog Park benches, so we can discuss it, and everybody knows what we're talking about, since you jumped the ball. Go ahead. Tell us what's going on with the benches, because none of the rest of us know.
They... He was talking about the vendors for the 4th of July. He was asking what...
I thought you were talking about the...
No, he asked what vendors had committed to the 4th of July.
Well, I apologize. No, no. You're a good man, Ray. One thing, these tables are terrible, because I can't hear what's going on all the way here. So we gotta keep you straight next time. And I don't have my hearing aired on either yet. I haven't bought it yet either, but anyways. I just wanna let you know, Ray's kind of tough. But any... No. What I asked was...
Make sure you're talking to your mic, please.
What vendors... What vendors are coming, and how many? Obviously, I've done this for the last 10 years, Bob and the... You know, and the two Bobs. The only thing I found is the vendors are too close together. So that's why I asked, what vendors are you gonna get? And let's open it up more, and maybe eliminate a little parking... You know, less parking in here to open it up. Because Ray and Mike are right. There was a lot of people here, and they were crossing lines and everything else. So if you know how many vendors, I think we should just make, where you put them, give them more room. That's all. Okay? But I think you did a good job with that. I think that really worked out well, so...
Yes, it did.
And I'm sorry, I jumped the gun, Ray.
No, I thought you were talking about something else. I apologize. What else you guys got?
Well, I know Dog Park benches is later...
Bob's got that.
Bob's got it.
Okay. Bob's got that? Is that what I said? Okay.
Yeah, he's got pricing and everything.
Bob, they said you got that.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Don't jump the gun, Ariel.
Anything else on community services?
That's it.
Mike, seriously, I want you to give... You should give serious consideration for hamburgers and hot dogs on July 4th. I mean, yeah, I know it might rain, but it might not. And how much money would you get?
We would lose money. We've done in the past. There is this... I promise you, it doesn't make sense.
I know.
It doesn't make sense.
Half the time, we do things that don't make sense to me. God forbid, we treat people...
So if it rains... So I've done it for eight years. It does not work. We... You just lost hundreds of dollars. You have all the staff there. It's not economical for us to do that. It did not work.
How about a service to the community? Doesn't count.
Well, I mean, I understand that, but...
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Bob Brumfield, district employee. Last month, we sent out 147 warning notices and picked up 67 signs. About half as many signs as the previous month. The hail fixing guys are running out of business, I guess.
Is it the... It's a lot of roofers, though, isn't it, too?
Lot of roofers. There's a lot of... I think Manor Hill alone's got 200 roofs they have to repair in there. It's crazy.
Lord. Anything strange that's going on?
There's always strange things, but we just address them as they come. I mean, nothing out of the ordinary. It's just always some little thing. I had a guy call me this morning. There's a house on Monza that has chickens now. So we have to go and find out where that is, and...
House on Monza?
Monza, in Manor Hill.
Chickens?
Chickens.
Bob, is that the same guy that used to do it?
No. Different one.
Was he selling another?
But they don't know, and that's part of the problem, is they're not aware of some of the ordinances. So usually, when we let them know that they're not allowed to do that, they get rid of them. Eat them, or whatever they do.
Bob, on your report, you have high grass violations issued. You have 33 and only 18 comply.
Yeah, that was a lot of them were towards the end of the month. And it... All of them, except for one, have complied now.
Okay.
They're all in compliance, except for one of them, and that we're probably gonna have to take to the special magistrate when we have a hearing next.
Okay. And...
You got one that's refusing?
They just haven't responded. So, you know, we just have to press forward.
Where at?
It's on Sunnolake Boulevard.
And the sanitation issue, what is that?
It's all over. These, in particular, Grenada. It's probably three of those, three or four of those.
All right. And you're gonna take care of that oven that's on my street?
Yes.
So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Bob? Any public comment for Bob?
No.
Isn't over here? Thank you, Bob.
Bob, thank you for getting that... I think... Did you guys get that trash? The people were very happy.
The owners took care of that, actually. Yes. We went back over there, and it was gone. We checked on it. It was gone. So, and then we talked to the guy that complained, and he said they came and picked it up. The owners did.
Somebody asked me yesterday if it was us that did it, or...
No, it was not us.
The owner, because the owner went over there, and I said, "Well, I'll find out." That's why I asked.
The owners picked it up.
Thank you for responding to it. You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
They had 20 bags of trash in their backyard.
That's a bug. From New York.
Security. Bob. By the way, when are we gonna... Are we making the change with these guys soon?
Yeah. That's taken place. We're just waiting. We're interviewing a security employee. So we totally shift the duties around. We're interviewing for his old position.
Good morning. Good morning.
My name's Bob Hiltz. Hi. Our staffing levels, due to the assistance of Ariel, we're back to full strength again. Due to illness returns and new hires, we're back to full strength now. So that's getting easier on me. And trust me, and like, we're probably very short time to doing the complete transition.
Now, you do know that if it comes to time where you get... Your staff is overworked again, because of things that happened, that you ought to go to Chris and say, "I need additional help."
Right. Right, well, we do have, Ariel and I made a brief conversation, we're gonna deal with one more person that we're gonna bring on, or, or there's a person that, you know, one more shift person for an on-call person, and then we'd be like we had in the past. We went from like 10 employees down to five.
So you've got one more you wanna hire?
Yeah, one more.
Temporary. Are we covering the budget?
Yeah, it's an on-call person, he'd be an on-call, part-time person. Right.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I don't want any excuses being that we can't cover what, what our needs are.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm looking for.
I understand. And, uh, and I did place a traffic study that we recently done, um, on Villabella. Oh, I'm sorry, on Viscaia. We had several complaints. Viscaia is the first stop sign coming off of Sunlake Boulevard on Ponce de Leon. And actually, as you see the study, the study doesn't nowhere near come to our concerns, but when I talked to the property owner, um, she said, once we put the sign up, all the speeders were going down the next street over. And you guys know, if we put a speed bump, that same thing's gonna happen. If they, if, if they don't wanna go over the speed bump, they're gonna go to the next street over, and we're probably gonna end up having complaints on each and every one of those streets until we put speed bumps on every one. So I, I just, you know, that would, and that was, that I don't think is feasible as far as-
So, was this done based on a request from somebody in the community?
Yes, sir. Bob, the, the, um, the lady made contact, I forgot her name, Bob knew her name. Um, made contact with Bob and then he just referred it down to me and said, hey, we need to put it there for a while. We're presently doing another traffic study on Columbus Boulevard, cause we're getting all the construction trucks and couple other issues as far as the, the rate of speed going down Columbus from when it goes from 35 to the 25.
What is the speed limit here at Viscaia?
On Viscaia, 25 miles an hour, it's complete residential. It's complete residential, prime of fascia, 25 miles an hour. But they're very, very minutely over, and what you look for is, is a common, that 85 percentile. Yeah, I mean, and if you do, we can, sure, we can put one there, and it, it is a very, very busy street. You know, it's the main thoroughfare into those other five streets in there. Everybody has, everybody has to turn on Viscaia to get to those other streets.
Well, we go by your recommendation first, your recommendation is not to do it.
I, it, there is, but isn't enough travel on it to do that? But, the lady complained, they're going there, they're still doing it, they're just going on the next street over. So it would be-
Well, then just go back in a couple of weeks and check it out again. I mean, you know, if, if, if at first it doesn't seem like we need it, then we don't need it.
Right. I thought about doing the study once with the flash off. Because when people see the flash on how fast they're going, then they, then they become, but I can turn the sign off, so it will, I can record their speeds, but it won't read on the sign and the sign won't light up.
That's a good idea, try that.
And that way, they would think, oh, the thing ain't on, and here we go.
Right.
And we can become in the Indy 500 again.
Give it a couple of weeks, go back to Viscaia, and try it with the, the sign off.
Okay.
See what you get.
Alright, thank you.
And compare, we'll compare it to this and make a better educated guess.
We'll do it. Anything else?
Yeah, on, is it, do we, you guys do the bank drops all the time?
I do. I do, um-
I just noticed that, do we do that all, that's just how we operate?
Yeah, we got rid of Loomis.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we got rid of that, cause TD closed their Sebring office, and you know, we were paying for a while Loomis, and, uh, so we got an account with Heartland Bank. It's right down within Sun and Lake, basically, to service our drop.
I mean, when I see something like kids banging on door, and there's a couple of them here, there's-
Yeah, they call that something, and it seems like right after school got out, same thing as last year. When the kids got out, they got nothing to do, and some parents just let their kids run at night, some of them were at 2 o'clock in the morning. They bang on people's door, they don't ring doorbills, they bang on the door and then they run.
So, I mean, when you get the complaint, what do you do?
Uh, we drive by there, sometimes, sometimes we can even find younger, um, residents lingering around at that time in the morning, and we probably take their names down and send them home.
Okay.
Here's one, you know, this one that asked to check on the family receiving death threats, why are we not, why aren't the police involved?
They are. Every time we get a complaint like that, we're usually, when we get a complaint like that, we're usually the second to arrive. Usually when we arrive for something like that, the county sheriff's already there. Cause we call them, the minute we get a call like that, we call them.
Any other questions from the board? Any public comments? Thank you. Keep, just make sure you keep using that machine. That's a good thing, I'm glad that you're doing that. Even if nobody asks for it, you guys should have an idea of a schedule of where you wanna place it. I don't want that thing sitting and not being used. Good, good, thank you again. Utilities.
Good morning, Joseph Sliva, supervisor of utilities. The number of new connections for the month of May was 11. Interviews for the technician positions, we currently have two available. I have interviews, they're currently scheduled, I had one yesterday, the gentleman did not show up. I have one today, Wednesday, and I'm waiting on a couple, uh, scheduled days for a couple others. So, it's looking promising. On the wastewater side of our operator, um, there was one that had come across Mr. Shoemaker's, um, desk, and he reached out, and I had an interview the beginning of the week with him, he seems like a promising candidate. So, uh, Mr. Shoemaker's gone and I contacted him and looking to hopefully employ him. So, we're waiting on his response. Uh, projects have been underway, uh, 23 has been completed, uh, with the check valves and the aeration line valve. Uh, unit four wastewater treatment plants, lift station check valves have been completed. While they were in there, there was a bad on-off valve, so I had them go ahead and replace both of those, they're roughly $900 apiece, there was two of them. Um, but now the station, the headworks are almost completely brand new, so. I've got a couple things, um, for that station as well, we have one, one of the motors, our pumps that were in there is being rebuilt by Mater. And then we've also signed off on a new motor, or new pump for that station as well, since it's a master station, DP likes to have the extra spare, sorry. I will work on giving prices on the next, or anytime I do updates like this, so I know it's a little bare, bear with me. And also sludge hauling, I know, you know, 23, we had an issue, and it costs more money than was budgeted. But, um, unfortunately, unit four is being pumped right now, I don't have a total on it yet. But it is, it's gonna be another hit, unfortunately. I know the numbers aren't on there as well, like I said, work on having that on there next time. But there is a talk, possibly some permit mods for the plants, that we can save some money. So, I've talked to the pew who hauls the sludge now.
Yeah, when we get, when we get to your budget, we have to look at that one account.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's still gotta be extremely low. The sludge, the sludge hauling account, it's like 30,000?
Yeah, yes, sir. No, yeah, it's an, uh, yep, no, it's, it's a learning curve, especially with the, uh, that one part going down to unit 23. So, other than that, that's all I have, if you have any questions for me?
I do, Joey, um, how are you coming with the licensing for your guys that were, uh, that been doing it for the last year or two?
I had one go this ti- past Tuesday, he unfortunately failed by a few points. Uh, we're rescheduling this test for 60 days out, cause it's, as soon as you can do it. I have another one that's going the 28th of this month for his wastewater. Hopefully he'll pass, um, but I don't know, that's all I have.
Well, just keep encouraging them, get, get it, please.
Most definitely.
You know, I mean, cause you got some good guys there, so.
I agree with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions, any other questions?
I, I have a brief question, I was gonna ask him just for the board's information too. Joey, when you change out check valves, why do you change them out?
Uh, wear and tear, um, they, uh, the seal, I guess the internals, they just get kinda wore out and they start rocking, they might not seal correctly, when they close back, they could have, uh, that plate could be slightly offset, and it's gonna allow flow to come back into the station when the other pumps kicked on. So far, the, the newest one I've seen that we've pulled out so far is from 1995, so. It's a pretty common thing to change out. So, um, we're just really, we're, we're trying to get some of these check valves that, for instance, the unit four pump, we believe that's why it was burned up. The motor was fried because of the check valve sticking, causing the pump against that. It also opens the door for debris to get stuck inside of them, if they're not setting right, that's a common thing. Just the mechanicals in general are, aren't working correctly on them. So, trying to eliminate the big price points of replacing pumps because of a check valve.
And, and one other thing I was gonna mention too, with these speed bumps, um, that I've noticed, is they seem to put them adjacent to manholes, so when people are coming up and stopping at a speed bump, they're stopping on top of the manhole, or on the other side, taking off and pushing them right down into the street because of where they located a six or $800 speed bump, they're destroying a $50,000 manhole.
Well, that's great, why don't you do something about it?
Yeah, you can just-
Well-
What do you want us to do, that's, that's, is that Drew who signs, who decides on where it goes?
Well, I guess in the past, they were just put on the, put on the ground where they put them, their location, or looking at driveways and things like that, without any regard to the manhole, and that's what we're gonna do moving forward, is if you decide like this to put new ones in, utilities will get involved.
So get with Drew and make sure that, that, that part of it's covered as well. It's true that does it, right?
Well, in the past, just, just so you know what, how it was done, is the person that would bring in, in their letter or their petition, they were the ones that they were complaining about the speed in front of their house. So that's where we ended up, we have moved a couple in the past, uh, one woman, I think, was, I think she was deaf. Uh, you know, so we had to move that, but usually where they put them is where the complaint is, right? Now, I mean, you know, Chris, and that's a good-
That's fine, but it has to be moved 10 to 15 feet because of a manhole.
Exactly, you know, you know, but that never came up before, that's the first time I ever heard that, uh, so.
Okay.
Just look for it, that's all.
Any other questions? General counsel.
Okay, uh, I'd like to say at the last meeting, the Avanti hearing, uh, scheduled for June 21st, uh, once that hearing, that's the hearing on the defendant's motion to dismiss, most likely what they'll end up involving is a, uh, amended complaint, but once that happens, it'll get, that, that case should be getting, moving along. There's been, I had a discussion with the owner of the, the Turn, Turn Two Brewery there, after, when you go in the main entrance to Tanglewood, they're wanting to get a sign, uh, there's been some dispute over who owns that property, but we found out just earlier this morning that the district owns the, the, the right of way there, and so it would probably on us to, uh, either authorize, so I'm gonna get with the building department and, and, uh, and, and the Turn Two people, and see if we can come up with a, a, a plan, but it, it'll have to, it'll go through us somehow, because we're, the district owns the, owns that property.
I don't know what you're, what you mean, David.
Okay, so you know the big Tanglewood sign at the Tanglewood entrance? The Turn Two was trying to put, uh, an ad, you know, something saying, hey, we're back here, on the Tanglewood sign, and Tanglewood told them no.
Is that the brewery?
Yeah, the brewery, correct.
Now I got you.
So now, since Tanglewood said that they can't use their sign, you know, to attach to, they're wanting to put up a separate sign. So, since we own the property, technically, they're, they're gonna, it'll have to go through us to, you know, to, to get that put up.
Okay.
So is Tanglewood's sign on our property or their property?
It's on our property.
Okay.
Correct, so, but-
So Tanglewood's, uh, wait a minute, Tanglewood's sign is on our property?
So it's Tanglewood?
Right. Okay, so this company wants to put a sign on their sign?
Yes, they did originally, but now, but Tanglewood told them no. So now they're wanting to put up a separate sign.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I just wasn't following.
Yeah, no problem. Um, Mr. Brooks, Miss, uh, Mr. Shoemaker and I had a meeting with Dave Halbig about the gas tax thing, uh, I don't know if we wanted, do you wanna discuss that now, Ms. Brooks?
Sure.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, ba- basically, there's, he, he's asking for a revisitation, uh, about the gas tax. My, what I said was that if, if we're, that's something that the board wants to consider, I would say the first step of that would be to, uh, ask for an attorney general opinion. However, uh, as our meeting, when we had the meeting with, uh, the county, and the county's attorney, and the county administrator, and Mr. Kerewak, uh, Mr. Hoteling was the supervisor that attended that, uh, the county attorney flat out said, I don't care what the attorney general says. I'm not going to recommend, under any circumstances, that we allow this. To, that, she would not make that recommendation to the board. While I would, you know, it would make me happy if we got, if we got an attorney general opinion that agreed with me, uh, I don't see any, you know, real reason to, you know, push forward with it if it's just gonna end up being a battle with the county. Uh, but that being said, if, if the board's willing to consider it, uh, I think that would be the first step, would be to ask for, reach out for an AG opinion, and, uh, see if it's, if it confirms with mine, if it doesn't, you know, then that, in my opinion, would completely end the, end the discussion. Uh, but in the ov- if the attorney general opinion does come back and agrees with my memorandum, like I say, I don't know, I don't know where that puts us, you know, I don't, I don't know where-
I think, I think we should go ahead, the cost of doing this is very minimal. Because he's already kinda drafted the letter a couple months ago. Let's find out what the AG says. Based on what the AG says, then we'll have another meeting, uh, the three of us, I guess. And see what our options are, if we have any options, I don't wanna get necessarily the board involved at this point in time, cause there's nothing to get involved with. But I'd like to go ahead and tell him it's okay to send the correspondence to the AG and get the AG's opinion. That's where we're, that's, that's where we are. Anybody have a problem with that? What?
No, hey, it's just that we're going back now, we're discussing the same thing, the same problem.
No, I'm not, we're not involving, you guys are not getting involved in this until we have better clarification.
My opinion is that we just, we already voted not to deal with. I mean, I, I don't even-
It's not in our records?
I think we met with the amount of being nice anyway, so, that's enough.
Their, their proposal, if I recall right, they're, not only did she say, or he say, they don't care what the AG said, but they said, in the event that that was our position, then they were to say, they will take over our roads. And in the meantime, because they don't meet standards, you have to bring them up to standards first, before we will, and that, that will be their response back to us.
Right.
And that's when we decided that we had talked enough about that. In my opinion.
Yeah.
I'm not disagree with it.
So I, I personally think we oughta just leave it alone, and tell anybody else that says that, that the board has made that decision. I don't wanna get into all this, what Craig's talking about.
What, what will we, what would we do if we had, if the AG agrees with us? Are we gonna change our-
We'd have to sit down and, and discuss it. There, I, there is no end result, or no end game at this point in time. We were just wondering what the AG would say. Since there was very little cost in it, I didn't see a harm in doing it. Doesn't mean anything's gonna come of it, doesn't mean something won't, I don't know.
I just think, I, we've already voted on this, it shouldn't be an issue.
Did we vote on it?
Yes. Yes, we did.
That was before your time. Everything-
Well, I was hoping for, you know, some sort of consensus, it sounds like we got consensus one way, if there's, which is not to do it, which is, which is fine with me, but if anybody wants to make a motion and take a vote, we can entertain that, otherwise, the consensus I'm hearing is to not worry about it, and to, it's been voted on and to drop it.
David, what's your opinion, should, should we send a letter, would it be, I mean, tell me?
The only reason I would send a letter is, the, the, the only benefit I see to sending a letter is that if it comes back positive, that that reinforces your faith in me, that I, that my opinion was correct, but I don't think it's gonna make any difference in the long run.
It's not.
Yeah, and I just, at whatever cost, it was cost for you, I'm sure it is, you said at this meeting. I mean, it's right, wrong, or indifference, we voted not to just let it go.
I agree.
And I would make that motion to, to say it again. Let's leave it alone, and I don't care if somebody calls and wants a meeting, we've made a decision. That's right.
Okay, that's fine with me. Uh, the only thing I have is, we, do we wanna discuss the, do we? Do we, is there a second? I guess, if that's, if, if Mike, if that's your, Mr. Gilpin, if that's your official motion, did we have a second to that motion? The motion is to do nothing, the vote is already, the board's already voted, and so the, there is, the motion would be to-
Vote to do nothing?
Well, that's what, he, Mr. Mr. Gilpin has made, Mr. Gilpin has made a motion that we do not seek an AG opinion, because, because the board has already voted, and this is a closed issue, so.
Well, I just, what I'm trying to stop is this happening again. And I don't know how it come back to begin with, other than our president decided to have this meeting.
Wait.
No, that's not true, now that's not true.
I have a question.
We all got the letter. We all got a response.
Have we ever gotten anything from the AD in the past that you know of? An opinion?
Yes, we've got an attorney general opinion in the past.
And what was it?
Oh, not about this, not about this issue, no, not about this issue, we have reset, we have the right to reach out to the attorney general for an opinion.
So we have never asked for an opinion from you, uh, from your attorney general before?
On the gas, on this gas tax issue, no, we have not.
Okay. So how can we vote and we never got?
Because the other-
An opinion from the AD?
We don't, we don't need it.
Well, I, I don't care what they-
Trouble with lawyers and shit like that.
David's cheap rate.
But I, I just, this is a closed issue, just because a gentleman comes up and says, we need to do this, we've already voted and closed this for multiple reasons, because they don't keep their roads up to standard, I like the way we keep our roads up, I don't wanna be driving over potholes, I mean, there's multiple reasons, it's not just for that.
It, it would end up costing us so much money.
And we're going to the county anyway to ask them about Shoemaker, Schumacher, and the extension on protest and all that other stuff. I just think it might be, and I think we've already voted on it.
I, I, I can rescind my motion if, if we just forget it, I mean-
That's, yeah, that's fine, yeah, there, the consensus I'm hearing is that it doesn't, it doesn't, we don't want it to happen, so, I don't think, there's a, I don't think there's a reason to vote to. So if you're willing to withdraw your motion, there's no reason to vote to not do anything, correct?
But nothing we do can keep that individual from continuing to come here and say, speak his mind about the gas tax.
Correct, yeah.
That's okay.
That's just-
I understand that, I just, that's why the conversation took place at the beginning.
And it was rescinded, we're good, and there's, there's no reason to move forward with anything.
Okay.
Uh, do you wanna do the five popular seat discussion now?
The what?
The discussion on the five popular seat draft.
Yes. Yeah, if you want, sure.
So, yeah, so looking, y'all got a copy of what I drafted, and what I drafted was, you know, relatively simple, and the main reason I did it the way I did it is because we already have a general election coming up, or, I mean, a, an election coming up at the end of this year. The, oh, the, what I did not address, uh, because I didn't really think that there's a need to, is which seats would be affected. Because basically what it would be is, we would have, the, what, what I see happening would be we have, we would just take the two seats that are coming up for, cause we have a, a seat, technically, we had, the, the seat that's up for reelection is only miss, the seat that was previously occupied by Mr. Hoteling. We'd be, it'll be a vote in November, and that seat would be filled beginning 2023. So if we add an additional seat, the other seat would be a landowner seat, which would be Mr. Gilpin's seat, based on our records, and that his seat would be voted on, if, if it's a landowner, the, the way it would normally work, before the change, is that the 2023 landowner meeting, his seat would be voted on and filled in 2024. So my recommendation would be, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a two-seat vote in 2022, and it would be to, for those two seats, and then the other ones would be in 2024. The, the only thing that really concerns me about the entire process is technically it has to go through the county, because we're requesting a modification of our ordinance, and I don't know how fast we can get that to happen. But-
But we don't, we don't need it to happen until the election for two, 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 2024. This doesn't change in November, November's good, is what it is, correct?
Well, correct, for the, for the two seats, but if we're changing, that's what I'm saying, is if-
But the other three seats are two years away. So we have a year and a half or so to get it done, if we decide to get it done.
Correct, correct.
Soon the county would be able to react within a year.
I would assume so too.
So I don't see that as a problem.
Okay.
Does anybody see that as a problem? So two and three is fine.
So it'd be every two, every, the, on the general election years, it would be three seats that would be up for reelection, and on the, on the, the non-divisible-by-four years, it would be two seats. So it'd be every two years, it'd be two, four, I mean, two then three, then two then three, back and forth, so.
Are we all okay on that?
In theory, in theory, I would serve till 2025, right? If I was just elected.
You're, yeah, no, your seat up, you would be, yeah, you would be, your seat would be voted on in 2025 and seated in 2026.
But then that, that doesn't-
That's the, under the current situation, so if we change it, it would be voted on in 2024 and seated in 2025.
Yeah.
You'd lose a year.
You said you were happy about that. Alright, now, alright, so does anybody have a problem with the, this being written the way he has written? Because the next time we see it, it should just be without the crossouts.
Correct.
And we will have a meeting that we'll schedule sometime beginning of October.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, to review this, hear what people have to say, and then finalize whether we do it or not.
Yeah, after that October meeting, if it's voted on and approved in the October meeting, after hearing from the public, including the northerners and, and Canadian residents, or property owners. After that, then it would be submitted to the county for, for the change.
Right.
If you're running out input from- If you're running out input from the Northerners, it should be in November, not October.
I agree.
I don't care.
Okay.
That's fine.
I'm just saying that that's what you're asking.
You guys okay with November?
November's fine.
Okay.
November? What else you got, David?
That's it, unless there's questions.
I think I had, oh, the lawsuit on the meters. What?
The bond.
The bond, I think.
When do you think that could ever come to?
Well, like I say, we have a hearing on the 21st. Once we have, once that, once that occurs, there's probably going to be a, there's going to be an amended complaint. Once that amended complaint occurs, there'll be 20 days to respond to it, and that'll get the ball rolling. So this is the, basically the, I would call it the first hurdle. Once this hurdle's over, it'll be off and running again, and then.
Technically, what, one or two years away from maybe getting anything?
Oh, yeah, I say, if, if, yeah, if we conclude it in 2023, I would be, that'd be great.
Very good. Oh, I mean, it might not, it might be longer.
Not be 2023.
It might be longer than that, then, okay.
So, so David, if it goes our way, and we get in a, right, do they have insurance to cover this, or is that a pocket of a company?
I don't know. I don't, that, I, I don't know, that, it hasn't been addressed yet, because basically, basically what they're, at this point, what they were claiming is that there's no basis for the suit. And so once what, once we overcome that hurdle, and I've got every reason to believe that we will, that will, basically it'll start a new round of negotiations, because once they, if they, you know, once this motion is dealt with, and if the court says that there's, you know, there's still reason to proceed, then they know, well, you know, I don't get, it doesn't get thrown out completely, now we have to address, you know, they know that they're going to have to spend more money on attorneys, and, you know, it's going to drag on for longer, so it may put them in more of a position to settle.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't know if they have insurance then?
Correct.
Anything else? General Manager.
My report I started with, and it, it will have a lot of impact coming up with the hurricane season, but the Director of Emergency Management who works for the Governor had a workshop, and basically about four hours long, and attended by representatives of the city and the county. Joey and I went, there were folks from Spring Lake Improvement District there, it was very good program. The gist of it was, he's going around doing presentations because the governor was concerned they left $44 million on the table of federal money in the last hurricane that could have gone to local governments and special districts and also nonprofits. So he talked about a vehicle where instead of us going through FEMA and FEMA taking 12% of the administrative costs off the top on the reimbursement, that we can go through the state through an agreement, and 100% of that cost will be reimbursable. And if we have issues with filling out the mountains of paperwork and getting the field data, they'll actually send a scribe down to ride with our people, take all the data for the FEMA reports, and they'll, for that, they'll take 40% of that administrative fee, but we'll get 60% for basically doing not much anything, because it is 100% reimbursable. We talked about specifics interacting with other agencies, and he also made a point that any nonprofits we have or church groups that come out and assist with hurricane damage, that their efforts are reimbursable on a dollar-to-dollar basis. So if they're feeding people, if they're helping clear lots and clear debris, those costs are reimbursable through FEMA. So this, the step we're taking is, I'll be bringing to the Board July 8th an agreement with the state that we work through them instead of directly through FEMA, and it also makes a lot of their aid packages available to us. But the bottom line is, if we do get impacted by a hurricane, which the odds are good, that we can get all the reimbursement that we're entitled to for damages.
Very good.
What else you got?
Waste water facility plan, it still isn't complete, Florida Rural Water, we did send them back some comments. Hopefully I'll be bringing a final draft back on July 8th, and it'll follow the same roadmap that we did today with the facilities plan. The Board would approve it, set a public hearing date, be vetted in public, resolution would accompany it and be passed, and off to Tallahassee it would go.
With those being presented, let's say after July 8th, do you think they'd act on them in August?
Well, we hope so, it's going to be tight, but if they don't, they have a funding meeting in January. So they'll be setting it up in December, so four or five months later, so we'll just keep it on track, and we can adjust our budgets accordingly. Most of that front-end cost, when you're working on engineering and design, it's the first year, it's reimbursable, so it's really the following year where you're budgeting the money to do it, which is then reimbursed, and your payback doesn't start until two years after the project's complete.
So you got, you got the initial draft on the wastewater plan?
Yes.
Well, how much was it?
It didn't have cost figures on it, it just went into specific, you know, and they're plugging those in right now.
Okay.
The Florida Rural Water Association, we had Pulson Engineering do the stormwater plan, and the Rural Water did the wastewater plan, and we're also taking those plans, because we have to send plans out to the state on our infrastructure, and what money we're planning on spending, and how much we need, and what our gap is, what we don't have, and how we're going to fund that gap. The hailstorm on April 4th, they're pretty much done with all their investigations. Gulf's still submitting a few follow-up papers on the business loss claim, and the next thing we'll see, and it'll probably be in the next two to three weeks, is what they're going to pay out on each of our damage claims. And at that point, the Board can decide, put them all out to RFP for one company, or if a lot of the costs are under $100,000, we could award them directly, ask for contractors for the amount of insurance that we're paid. I think we're going to be in sticker shock when we see what some of the values of these metal roofs and the actual damage claims.
Yeah, we're in sticker shock when we put them up.
Yeah, and same thing with some of the air conditioning units and the coils, and it's really going to be a matter of time, you know, if it starts raining, luckily we're not having any leaks with anything right now. I did note, note too, that bathrooms on the golf courses and carports and storage areas were not on our insurance policy.
How?
Well, I guess when they put them up, or they just were never added, we'll add them now.
Some of those bathrooms have been up for a long time.
Well, they, they weren't, they weren't on the list of buildings.
Well, I know it's the district's fault, let's just leave it at that.
Sure, but we'll, we'll get them added. And one thing about FEMA, if you have damages like that, and you show them they aren't covered on your insurance, that's where they'll pick them up. If they are covered by insurance, they typically will stay away from it, so that from that side, it's a benefit.
To say it's a crime, that we were not covered for all of our buildings. Whomever was responsible should be shot.
Chris, how many buildings you talking about, how many bathrooms, what do you mean not?
20 buildings.
Now, well, not 20, but the bathrooms on Turtle and Deer, several carports we had related to them, like the carports over, that they put up for the shuffleboard, those weren't on there, the building that's adjacent to tennis courts there that the kitchen uses, that was not on the covered building list.
Well, we got money for that from FEMA one time.
Yeah, well, that's probably because it wasn't on the list. Yeah, they weren't on the policy. The ARPA funding Scott addressed. And I will make a comment that Commissioner Rapp and Scott were at that meeting, and the Director chided them for the lack of county participation, because he said he thought, he goes, where's your engineer, where's your emergency management director, where's your roads and bridge person, where's your EMS, where's your landfill person, I'd expect them to be here. And after the meeting was over, I went up to Rapp and I said, well, we might have missed the ARPA meeting, but we didn't miss this one, because her staff wasn't there, and she did say touche, and when Kevin comes back, you should get your money on the 21st. So I thought it was real nice. Another thing that came up recently, we got a ransomware prevention survey from our insurance carrier. You know, everyone's getting into these payouts for computer crime and, and that, and they gave us a list of things to fill out, and there were a few that we had, would have to check no on. So we are moving forward to rectify this thing, so we can return it with yeses. Some of it may have some incremental costs or some additional security software, it's like $10 a month per PC, so a few hundred dollars a month for our workstations. Some of the other things, we've started working on, when you talk about phishing training, our IT people are actually sending phishing attempts to our staff to see if they'll open these emails and open attachments, so it's, it's fake, but it's good training. And also air gapping, where we have backups every night, but that backup's taken off-site, so if our situation is compromised, we have daily backups, that the building burned down or something happens, we do have that. So we're, we're moving forward with that. And on the negative side, we haven't gotten one qualified applicant for the finance job. And I'm going to rewrite it to try to make it a little more attractive, but we, we rewrote it once and brought it up to the salary level, actually a little more than your incumbent was making here after six years. And some of it doesn't surprise me, because likes brothers had a similar position open, and it took them five months to fill it.
We needed accountant.
Yep, well, that's.
Trust me.
Yep, oh, I understand. And so I'm going to rewrite it with putting in a little more of the opportunities and some of the complexities to this job, which could attract somebody, us dealing with the bonds, the level we do and the assessments, and hopefully get the right person in, and thankfully Amanda's coming back next week for a couple evenings to help us out and do some training, and some of our existing staff have been stepping up with some of those things. You know, even wire transfers and that type of thing, you know, I'm getting involved with, so.
What else? But, anything else?
That's all I have.
Do you want to just mention real quickly that we did get the first draft of the
Oh, sorry.
The audit report for last year, and we will, I guess go over and put it on the schedule for next month?
Yeah, we've made a request to do it, and it, I, I have it in there. I mean, I didn't have it in the board book, because we didn't get it until a few days ago. And that took, starting in February, we got a letter from them saying, we got all your information, it's under review, and Amanda had been sending in follow-ups for months. I started last month, sent another email and a phone call, a week later, still not answered, so I called the managing partner of the firm. Next day I got a phone call, and three days later, the draft came in, and there's a supplemental form we have Governor, I'm looking at special districts, how much did you spend on construction projects over $65,000? How many people work for you, what are you paying them? There's some supplementals that we're turning around the next few days, and we'll send to them so they can finalize the audit. But we got it last week, and it's due to the state at the end of this month. So we got about two weeks in, I said, well, I can't even take it to the Board for them to formally accept it before it's due to the state, look at the position y'all put us in.
So we'll put that on the agenda for July, I'm not sure which one, one time in July. Anything else? You want to go over the permits real quick, or just point them out?
Sure.
Well, you guys have any questions, just, he just updated the permit, so.
I can just, as an FYI, in case for you, you may or may not know, but there is another auction going on right now with a bunch of lots from Sun and Lake on the dock.
Is, Craig, there's a lot of them, is this the first one since six months ago, or a year ago?
I think the last one, maybe about six months ago. Yeah, well, it would have been when Prominence, and they needed to close by October 1st. And seemed to me like there was, there was another one.
Okay.
So it's only been like three, three months or so, and they're, they're running another one.
Last one wasn't as large. It was three months, you're correct, and it wasn't as many lots as they released.
This one's got quite a few on it.
It's got, okay, thank you for that. I asked that question, I, does, maybe, maybe Chris knows. Is Amanda involved in that? At the county, those sales?
No.
No, okay.
She's in purchasing strictly.
Okay.
Any other questions on that?
Well, I, I just, I mentioned it, did you guys notice that Prominence started with 20 and it went to 62, so?
I didn't know the number, but.
Yeah, it's, I counted, it's 62 lots, they're clear. And it's, if you can drive out there and look at it, it's quite impressive.
Anything on permits? No, all right, follow-up items, dog park benches. How'd they draft you into that?
Good morning, Supervisors, Bob Brumfield, District Employee. I've been working on, it was requested that we expand the dog park facility, the small area side, 35 feet towards the northwest on the, on the northern side of it. And I've been getting quotes, and, and I've, I've gotten two fence quotes and one removing tree quotes, because some of the trees are in the way of doing that. That, the quotes I've gotten so far are around $30.
Total, or? Is that for the fence and the trees, or?
That's for the fence and the trees.
Oh, okay, good.
Both, that's for total. We haven't put the benches in yet, because we're kind of waiting to see exactly where to put them.
Hold, hold, wait, it's for the expansion of the dog park.
It's, oh, okay.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's removal of trees, I guess, and, and some fence.
Yeah, that, I was just about to say, we haven't put the benches in yet, because it, I think the location of them was, originally was going to be in the center of the fences close to the lake, and if we move the one, it's going to remove, or change the location of that one to keep it in the center, so we haven't put the benches in yet. But I haven't gotten, like I said, I've only gotten two replies from fence companies and one from tree company.
So, we're, I guess we have to first decide if we want to expand the dog park before we know where we're going to put the benches, is that correct?
Yes, well, what I understand, what I understand is, the request was to make the, the, one of the parks, we, we plan on going up 30 feet, and that's the, that would be towards the golf course all the way down, so, so the price that he's given you, it's for the whole length of the fence, two gates, trees. And the request was to make that dog park larger, because the, you know, the large, you know, because how many people go there.
I can't do directions, so if I'm facing the dog park, is the one on the left or the one on the right?
It's the one on the other side.
The one on the left is the one we're going to expand?
Yes, yes.
And we're going to expand that towards the clubhouse?
Right, 30 feet out.
30, I think we went 35.
35, okay.
35, and this is where the big dogs are.
That's the small dogs.
Right.
So, the, correct me if I'm wrong, so where the, that little place where they park the carts, that's going to go bye-bye.
And that, in my mind, that, it won't go bye-bye, it will just become a place for, to put some picnic tables or something for more seating.
We're going to lose the parking.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
The slab, yes, we are.
The slab.
So we're going to either put a bench on it, but we're also going to leave the front open, right? Just so you know, because I know you're not very good with the, you know, the directions here. But on the front of it, it's going to be just used for the handicap?
No, no.
No, the gates in front, no?
I know, but it's not the handicap, it's for, it's going to be for ADA purposes.
ADA, handicap?
Wheelchair access only.
Right. And then the gates to get in and out of the dog park will be in the back of the building, I mean, in back of the fence by the lake, right?
So we'll put, we'll put it in gates too?
Yes, yeah.
Is that included in your price?
It is, everything's included.
And where are we going to park the golf carts that?
Back there by the gates.
Back, back there by the gates.
So we're going to put some concrete slabs in there?
No, because no, they don't use them now. One of the reasons we're moving the gates is everybody's parking up front, right? And it's, it's a mess out front. And so that's why the, the, they will automatically go back there and park by the gate. And that's why the front entrance will state, we have to, Wes Kelly told me, and I think through Ariel, that we have to have ADA access ability. So if we leave the gate the way it is, and not make it handicapped, make it wheelchair entrance only, the, the carts and everything will go to the back, it won't be any longer walk for those that feel they're handicapped, and we'll get rid of all the parking in the front of the.
So if the parking's going to be by the, by the back of it?
Yes.
How are they going to get there?
Just drive their cars, that's what they do now.
So they're going to kill the grass and all that?
Yeah, well.
Well, there's not much grass here, right? Well, there's not much grass here, Ray, because it's all pine trees.
Yeah.
Okay, they're going to drive through the pine trees.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or a building, if the building is there.
No, I think, I mean, I don't think any of us are opposed to doing this.
Okay.
But I think it probably would be beneficial if we saw on paper what the hell we're doing.
Yeah, I can, when I.
Kelly sent this up.
I have some maps and such. When I get more, more information on the cost from other people that are supposed to come out and take a look at it, then I can prepare it for the next meeting.
That doesn't change your map, right?
No, it doesn't change the map.
So can we, can you get us a copy of the map?
Sure.
On what we're talking about so we can look at it?
Yeah.
And I'm sure we're going to agree to it, I'd just like to see it before I say yes.
Yeah, I can do that, that's.
And I think, personally, I think you ought to try to put it in there.
Yeah, I, see, I would agree with that too.
I mean, make it, make it so it's obvious that that's where it's supposed to go and that's where it's supposed to go.
I've seen, otherwise they're going to be driving all over the place to get to the back. I'd rather give them, if it's an extra $1,500 to give them a pass.
The front of the dog entrance is pretty beat up from all the golf carts. Nobody except me parks over there on that slab. So.
I see, no, I see carts on that slab.
Well, once in a while, but it's.
Just get us a diagram and when you finalize the pricing, come to us. I don't think it becomes a capital expense, does it? It's not, doesn't sound like it's going to even qualify for that.
No.
What's capital got to be 25,000 or?
Right.
So I don't think it's a capital expense. So what you should make sure that they, that, that Chris does is cover it, oh no, we're going to do it this year, so just forget it, okay? Now I'll get out of some account this year.
Do I, do I need to get, this is, I'm not really familiar with the process, do I need to get other bids or other quotes if it's over $5,000, say?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought.
He may not be able to get three.
But the, but you're getting bids on your diagram, what you want, so you can show us that in the meanwhile.
Yes, absolutely.
When you get your bids and come to us with a recommendation on who you want to do it.
Sure.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
I just wanted to bring up for Beverly's sake, we looked at the big dog park side and there's some utility stuff over there. I, we can ask Bob to, that side was not expanded. Now, we can get a price to expand that side, it doesn't sound like it's going to be a lot either way, but there's some, it might be more because there's some additional trees and there's some additional utilities that the district has on that side, but I think they can make it work. Do you think we should enlarge that one at the same time or do that next year maybe?
I thought that was the whole intent was to.
Well, we're doing one side.
I thought we were enlarging it because the big dogs, they didn't have enough room.
No, and it wasn't that, it was the little dog side is the one that has all the dogs.
Oh, my.
I mean, I've been over there and there's been some on the big, but there was over 20 little dogs. So, but I, I don't mind. I mean, it might be something we want to do all together and.
Mike, I think we should just move on what we already have planned.
I just wanted to make sure Beverly knew.
Well, John says there's two or three big dogs in there all the time. I mean, the dog.
Yeah, there is, there's, there's two or three dogs, but when they're overloaded, it's the little dogs.
I don't want to have a dog issue every year.
Right.
So let's, if we're going to, if we're going to do something with the dog park, let's do, let's do it right and be done with it.
Then I want.
So we'll look at expanding the other side.
Look over there and maybe you and I can meet and, because there's, there's, it's got to be a real line a little different because of those utility things back there in the back on that side.
Okay, and we're definitely going to need a diagram if we're going.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring that up so everybody knew.
But it's not, I mean, it is a big deal. I mean, during season, there are lots and lots of dogs, you can't go by that place.
And that's fine, but I don't want to every year have to deal with the dog park.
So let's don't, peace, let's do it correctly.
Bob, we're meeting, we're, we're doing something on that side.
So we're going to widen both sides, but no more gates or anything, we just widen both sides.
There's already gates planned for the other side as well.
Right, exactly. Can you, can you fence around the utilities?
Well, or we can make it short and make it wider, Craig, I gotta look at it because until you go look at it.
Start moving the utilities.
We got, yeah, we can't move, that's those big pipes, so we got to work around that, you know, so it's.
And we also have irrigation there too.
Yeah.
So you guys keep getting deeper and deeper and more money, more money.
We got to, we got to work at it.
One time, I mean, I'm only going to be president for one this year, but I don't, whatever we got to do to fix it.
We have to do that, Ray, that's part of our job, we have to deal with stuff, but we can, I brought it up because I want.
Well, let's do it right the first time. Obviously, we didn't do it right last time, so let's do that, okay?
I'll get it, I'll get prices on what?
Well, we didn't do it right the first time, there's no wheelchair access, so obviously.
There is a wheelchair access.
Is there now?
Yes.
How many times, yeah.
I've never been to the dog park.
Well, maybe you should go before you make a statement, we didn't do it right the first time, okay? We did the best we could the first time.
If it's, if we're revisiting it, Mike, we didn't do it right.
Don't, don't sit here and say we didn't do it right the first time, we did the best we could the first time.
Well, it was wrong.
Keep throwing everybody under the bus.
Bob, meet with me, will you?
I will.
Okay.
At your convenience.
When you guys get it ready, bring it to the board.
Okay.
I mean, I thought this thing started with benches.
No.
It did, that's how, this is how this whole thing started with, you wanted more benches, now we're into redoing the whole thing.
Don't sit on benches.
It did, right? That's how it started. I want to, I want a couple more benches.
My husband is handicapped and needs another.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no. The pickleball update? Yes.
I believe this was covered in the last meeting, but just to add to that, the meeting with the pickleball folks that we previously met with, that President Brooks presented at the last meeting, we have a follow-up meeting with them on Monday, June 20th to review some of the options that were discussed in the previous meeting with Drew.
Do we have an update on the resurfacing? Have we, what did that to anybody or?
Yes, to 90, so same thing, we vote, that was voted on by the board at the last meeting or the meeting before that, that we were going to do that for 90 and that they could do the work prior to that November date that we had talked about. I want to say they were going to start in August.
So we have a date when they're going to start, because we probably should tell people we got to close the courts down and stuff like that?
Yep, we got the contract back to them, so we're.
Okay.
Yep, I'll follow up with Sunday on the exact dates and then we'll get some, some email blast going and we can include it in the, the next newsletter.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. District equipment update. I don't know, Jimmy, it's you and Mike.
Jimmy? Here. Jimmy, you got the paperwork? Jimmy and I and Mike and Bob and Bob, Bob has actually met on equipment.
Talking to your mic.
That better?
Yeah. You guys are hearing things. Jimmy and I, Bob and Bob, we've been talking about equipment. I gave you guys a list of what we have and what it's used for. My opinion, and I've talked to Jimmy about it, is I don't think that, I think we should buy all the old gators, put them under Sun and Lake and not lease. We'll save money there, but I will say one thing is, is because of these gators are in, you know, pretty good condition, it's because of the employees that take care of us. So, so I just want to, you know, so they are being taken care of, but if we want to save money, we gave you two options, it's strictly, you know, up to the board to vote on it. You know, we don't buy any gators this year, next year, we will have to put some money in for repairs, Jimmy, right? So, but our mechanics are pretty, pretty good on these and, I mean, we've got a gator, I think it's over 15 years old, still running, which that's probably the only one that we're going to send back and, and that's in Bob Brumfield's department and we do not want to replace that. I know it was on our list to replace it, but Bob and I talked about the uses of these gators and, you know, I think we can save some money for the next couple of years and then after, you know, use them two more years and they'll look into it. So Jimmy.
So what are we looking at? I'm not, I understand.
It's pretty, yeah, it should be option two. Yeah, option two is what we're looking at, Ray. I thought that's the least.
It's the bottom one, Ray.
Do you, do you have it, Ray?
Yeah, he's got it.
So option two says we're going to finance $830,000 worth of equipment? Is that what that says?
Yes, sir.
And it's going to cost us $190,000 a year?
Correct.
And, and we buy.
So option one, we're going to buy the two bigger four by four utility vehicles that the assistants drive and then purchase the 12 gators that we are currently leasing right And then the one fairway unit, I took one fairway unit out of the original request anyway. If we buy one of them that has lowest hours, that would give us three for a backup.
I'm sorry. You want, you want, you want, you're recommending, I don't mean.
Right.
Don't take this wrong. You want us to look at a four-year agreement at $190,000?
Yes, sir.
And to accomplish that, we have to spend $48,000 this year to buy this equipment.
Well, that's, all this stuff down here is, besides the, the gators, the 12 gators is on a, it's either that or you turn it back in and replace it.
But we still need equipment.
But you still need it.
You know, we still need equipment, so.
So with every, every piece of equipment on here, we do not own any of it. This is, all of these are on the current lease, right?
This is all on an operating lease.
A fair market value lease, so that means at the end of the lease.
So we'll save, the $190,000 saves us, 100.
It would have been two.
$190,000 will save us, wait a minute, 16, 20, 32, 64,000, $64,000.
Yes, sir.
Over four years.
Over four years.
Minus, minus the cost of repair to keep that equipment.
And you want to spend $48,000.
Right.
So the net result is we saved $16,000.
Yes, sir.
Before, before the cost to maintain the older equipment, it's going to cost us more to maintain the older equipment than it would be, and if we, if we were to do option number one where all that stuff was on lease, it would, it would actually be under warranty. So those items, if they broke, would be, that's correct.
I'm just trying to do the math, right now it's 216, is I think is what is in capital.
Correct.
So if we go down to 190, that's $26,000, right? So 26 times four is 52, that's 104,000. So I'm sorry, so we'd save 104, but we got to spend 48.
Yes, sir.
And then, but what's your projection on repair costs?
You know, Craig, the good thing is, is the gators are in good shape and the price they're selling them to you at, at $1,600, you could probably triple your money right now on them, especially on a used market value. That's a good price. They're giving you a fair price on it and at that, I mean, I, it's like I told Mike, it's probably worth a gamble at $1,600 if, I mean, the biggest expense would be if you had to put a motor in it, it's about $2,300 to put a new motor in those. But they are all in decent enough shape that I think we should be able to get two more years out of them. I just be prepared in two years that we need to revisit replacing our utility vehicles.
I think to make it cost effective, I think you have to go at least two years. If you only go one year on them, it doesn't work. If we have to go at least two years, we have to maintain them for at least two years in order for this.
To get the money back. Have we developed a replacement schedule? So we got to do it for two years.
That's what we would do is, is so, your same.
Does the top reflect the replacement schedule for the 12 women? We're only buying women.
We're not buying any.
We're buying 12.
We're buying, we'll buy them.
Well, we're buying, yeah. Oh, right. Buying 12. Right, we're purchasing the 12, right.
And we pull.
Is there anywhere in the top portion where you say if we get two years out of them, we're going to be doing good, is the replacement of those anywhere in the top or the bottom?
No, sir.
So even though we're talking about $104,000 less over four years, more than likely, if you're saying we can only get two years, in two years, we're going to need to spend.
X, $7,500 per cart or redo a lease or whatever.
We could probably say that what, 50% of them are going to have to be replaced.
I would say five to six, yes, sir.
So you're talking, would you just give me a price of what?
$7,500 per unit, again.
Six is 40, $50,000?
Yes, sir.
So.
With no, right.
Basically, all we're doing is, we're, we're saving them, it's going to be a wash.
It's a little, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a gamble, yeah.
It's going to be a wash.
And it could be better, it could be better than that and it could be worse.
Well, again, I want to save you all as much money as I can. I, the most, every bit of the stuff that we have up here currently is stuff that I need to do it. The utility vehicles, I mean, I, I say, I mean, like Craig said, it's a gamble, it's a wash. I mean, we, we need the, the people movers regardless, whatever we do, we have to have them. But I mean, if it, if it saves us money for the next two years until we can figure out, they can make it. I'm not going to say they can't. We, we have a great mechanic and he stays on top of his service, they are in good enough shape that I feel like I can get two years out of them.
Yep.
The other stuff is the big pro gators that we use the top dress with and everything, the, the larger utility vehicles, they're in good shape.
All I'm getting at is the $100,000 that we just calculated, it's going to be washed out with purchase of new equipment to replace the 12 that aren't going to last four years.
Correct.
See what I'm saying, Ray?
Oh, yeah. Now, listen, I, I know what you guys, I know what you went through to do this and I appreciate the effort, but the math doesn't work. I mean, I don't know, I, I mean, according, it's 104,000 we save, we got to spend 48 to buy this equipment.
Correct.
That leaves you 56,000 left. In a couple of years, we got to spend how much for gators?
Right.
Another 50.
I would.
So basically, we're just pushing money around, but we're not getting anywhere.
And you won't have any warranty on your carts.
Right, and the original, the original thought process that I had was, why in God's name does Sun and Lake own 23 gators? That was where I started from and I still don't have, I still don't have an answer why we have 23.
Because you have two different departments, Ray.
It's.
I don't understand.
We, we have twenty-two employees in the off-course maintenance.
And they all on gators?
Twelve, twelve of them, absolutely. So when we go out and mow greens in the morning, go mow fairways, when they come in to go edge cart pass or go to edge bunkers or go clean beds or whatever, they have to have vehicles to get around them, and you can't carpool on a two-seater.
Right. And you need the gators for, and we need gators for equipment. I don't care which way we go, but they need the gators. And this is exactly what you said. We have too many gators because, because, because they're in one side of the building and the other guy's in the side. And you walk in and you say, oh, look at all the gators, but you don't think, you know, and I went through this with Hal Biggs and I went through it with Millers and everybody. Why are there so many gators? Because the gators are used for utility vehicles to get people and to get equipment to work. And if you want that, you have to give them the equipment.
I'm just saying twenty-three sounds like a big number, Mike.
I, I understand.
That's all I'm saying.
Listen, I walk in there and I sometimes think the same thing and I can fight.
He's been in there the last, I mean, the last month and when you go in there at times like.
And I said, Jimmy, I said, where are they? Oh, they're out. Then the next day I come, just four sitting there. But he sends guys to different jobs, you know, uh, you know, they're mowing, they're, they're doing, and, and they're on different, uh, you know, equipment. They need the equipment. If we wanna save fifty, that's okay. Um, I was told, cause I contacted four other different places, and everybody said to me, it's not the best time of year or the best time to buy equipment, because they're gonna get you, because everything's high and everything takes a long time to get. So, we'll try to say, you know, try to say a little or not. Listen, I would love to see new ones, believe me, but.
Well, the big, the biggest thing is your warranties. Right now, sir, yes.
And, and see, and I, I agree that you guys did a lot of work, but, and, and I have no way of judging this, so I'm gonna go along with what you want, but I thought the original intent was to cut equipment. And, and there is, I, I, and I know.
There's nothing to, there's nothing to cut, Mr. Gilpin.
Mike.
Apparently, that's, there was a.
There's nothing to cut because they need.
I did, I did take a fairway unit out.
They do need equipment.
I, I just, I'm saying, I'm not arguing with you. I just know what, when the President Brooks set up the thing, was to look and see how much we could cut.
Right.
And, and I know you worked hard and you're saving us a little money now, but I don't think that was the original.
No, it was to look and see if we could save equipment, and obviously, we can't.
The other thing I was looking for is, why can't we put the district gators into your agreement?
Because, whoa, 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 the district gate, the different, the, uh, the district are not buying any new gators. They're saying exactly what they have for equipment.
You guys, you guys.
When we wanna buy them, why can't we put?
Well, I mean, down the road, we couldn't, right, yeah.
That was my whole point was.
Okay.
Who, uh, Chris, did you represent the district on this, or who, who was our guy? Mike, oh, Mike was our guy. Okay.
Boy, that was. No, but, but you gotta understand, we're not buying district, the district is not buying new equipment. Jimmy's buying a new equipment.
This is strictly golf.
Yes, sir.
Well, no, I gave you a list of what the district.
And, and the other thing, too, the gators that the district used on the road, they're not the same gators that we use on the golf course.
So what?
They're turf tires. You can't take Nobbies across a green.
Get them.
Can I get?
Your agreement.
Yes, I can, I can get the same.
That's what I'm saying, that's all I'm saying.
Well, we don't need to do it now, Ray.
You, you can get anything you want as far as John Deere.
Listen, I appreciate your efforts.
Okay.
I will tell you, based on what I see, I can support it.
Good.
I don't know if any, you guys wanna, Beverly, can you support it?
Absolutely.
Well, hold, hold, Mr. Brooks.
What they're suggesting?
Mi- Mr.
That's what they need to run thirty-six thousand.
By, by saying you don't support it, I just wanna clarify, we don't own this equipment. Come next April, this equipment, either, we're gonna, we have to do something with it. It's either, they're coming to pick it up.
You guys even can understand. I'm very happy, based on your math, it doesn't work. I'm happy with what you got in the system now, the two hundred and sixteen thousand. That's what I'm happy with.
So you're, you, so that's why I'm gonna clarify.
About me. I'm saying what you gave me here, it doesn't work.
So you wanna go with option number one?
Yes, that's what you said.
I don't know, we didn't even talk about option one. What is option one?
Option number one is, is.
The way we are.
So option number one has.
No, it doesn't, Mike. No, I don't wanna go with option one. I don't wanna buy equipment. Right, it doesn't make sense. I don't, I cannot buy equipment and pay two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Is that not correct?
You would be two hundred and four thousand.
Well, let's go through options. So option number one, there's still equipment that you would need to purchase.
What do you have in the capital now? Two hundred and sixteen thousand.
One eighty.
What do you have in the capital request right now? It's two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Two, two, yes, you are correct.
I can live with that based on what you're showing me here. I don't have to spend any more of the district's money than the two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Yep, right.
That's what I'm saying. Cause your math, I mean, I appreciate, again, the effort, but your math doesn't work, so I'll stay with where you were. That's me.
To me, Craig, you've been in the business, you know your warrant, I mean, the warranty's worth its weight. I'm telling you right now. If you don't, if you don't have warranty on this stuff, or if you try to get the existing stuff to go on and something happens, it would be absorbing it.
Okay, the two sixteen. What is different from the two sixteen than the two oh four?
So.
There's the pieces of equipment on the bottom, we're recommending to purchase those. That is, that, that does not include the.
The, the stuff.
Why, why do we want purchases?
Because it's not really a wearable. It's, it, here's the way, when I ran thirty-five golf courses, here's what we did. You had capital and you had operating. You take the capital, isn't, your tractors and everything, it's non-wearables. Tractors last, we've all been in the, around, they last twenty-five years. You, you buy those. It's stupid to turn in a tractor in four years and then they turn around and make money off of it. So these items down here on the bottom are, this is eliminating one, on option one we're looking at, that's eliminating one fairway unit off the top of the list, and that's why that number came down. You're still gonna purchase at nine thousand versus purchasing a fairway unit at a hundred and eighteen thousand. Or, yeah, fifty-nine thousand, excuse me. So, originally in your lease right now that you're currently running, you're running three fairway units right now.
And you, that's what.
I went down to two and said, purchase the one that has the lease. Four years, five years, um, it's. The Wells Fargo, don't they?
Yeah.
Does everybody have capital?
So that's, so we, we took that and we broke it down into the spreadsheet, so it was a little easier to follow, so you knew what the equipment was, cause if, you probably don't know what a.
And, and there's stuff, Ray, when we go into that Wells Fargo one, that should be on a capital and should be in an operating just as well. I mean, if it's a.
The Wells Fargo one is seventeen thousand dollars a month.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
That's two hundred and sixteen thousand.
Right.
A year. That's what, that's, that's what this is. I thought that's what we're gonna go with.
Yes.
Until, until you guys came to us with a proposal. Based on what you're bringing us, the math doesn't work, we're better off paying seventeen thousand dollars a month.
And get, and getting your full warranty.
And, yeah, getting the full warranty on everything.
We're still, we're still end up purchasing.
No, we're not purchasing anything.
Yes, you are, yes, yes.
Yes.
That's to get it to two oh four.
Uh, that's option number one, is that right there?
This is option that's on the capital budget right now for guys.
That number right there, imagine if, uh.
That number right there is what's in the budget.
Right.
Right.
But even in that proposal, there's equipment that we do not need to put on lease because of the last one. This is what we have in option number one, that's, we put it in the spreadsheet because I'm sure.
This is your sheet, I don't know.
Right, but we made the spreadsheet so it's easier to follow. So you don't, you don't know a seven, four hundred eight trim mower, this is, we put it on the sheets and you're like, what? It's the same thing.
We just put it on a spreadsheet.
So what do you recommend, option one or option two?
I would do option one. And, and.
Option one, I spend two hundred and four a year, but I gotta spend thirty-two thousand to get to that two oh four.
That you'll own, that you'll have.
That I'll have. And does this have to be replaced? Any of this buy, what I'm buying, in the next four years?
I would say not in the next four years, no, sir.
So if I want, what happens if I wanted to take this option, which is just to pay seventeen thousand dollars a month and not buy anything?
Then you're gonna lose, you're gonna lose all the stuff on the bottom.
Stuff on the bottom, you would lose.
The property.
Is that all backup? The bottom one's all backup?
Uh, no, sir. The pro, the pro gators are what we still use for our top dressers right now. We pull with our top dressers, our, uh, core harvesters, and then the two assistant utility vehicles.
Buy these, this has gotta change up on top.
We would have to, yes, absolutely.
Or we would. That number then become.
We, we'd have, you'd have to find the, find the lease payment, we don't, we don't have it.
It'd run you another thousand dollars a month. If you switched out all that stuff to new, the lower stuff.
You go a thousand dollars a month?
Yes, sir.
That's twelve thousand a year.
Correct.
Over the four years, it's forty-eight thousand. So that number now becomes two fifty-two, right?
Yes, sir. I would, the stuff's in good shape, I would buy it. Top dressers, I mean, they'll last you ten, eleven years, I mean, they take you forever. I would buy your pro.
The gators would have to be replaced within four, right?
Yes.
The four by four utility vehicles, is it gonna be replaced in four?
Uh, I don't, they're in great shape, I would say six.
So, for the purpose of this, this two oh four, that's okay through that period?
Yes, sir.
The fairway unit.
That one has less than two thousand hours that I always said I would keep, so you.
Last over four years?
Yes.
The pro gators, are they gonna last over four years?
Four more years, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And the top dresser?
Definitely.
So the only thing that you'd have to re, you're saying you have to replace is the gators?
The, the small utilities, yes, sir.
They don't last four years?
I, I was saying the small utilities, babe. The, so, the four by four utility vehicle's different than the gators, so we figured if we started, if started a process with the small gators doing them every four or whatever, then if we did five or six, then that would be an option, but if not, at least two.
But based on the list on option one, the only ones that would have to be replaced over the next four years is two gators.
Correct.
And that would cost how much?
Fourteen thousand.
Total?
Total, but we're.
At today's price.
So, one that you have right now, one of the small gators down here in the bottom is the one we're using for the beverage cart.
Well, we should probably get another one of those.
Well, what, what I would.
It runs better than the real beverage cart.
That's what I was getting, right. So, so really. No, sir, absolutely not.
Oh, no.
So what I would do in that regard, just take one of the new ones and make, get the beverage cart and then put the beverage cart back down as a working utility vehicle. So we'd have a nicer beverage cart.
All right, so you wanna go with two oh four, we buy, we spend thirty-two, we pay two oh four, and then we can count on fourteen the next four years.
Correct.
And that gets us to four years.
So.
Is that bottom line there?
Yes, sir. And I have one other option.
No, you don't.
No, 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 no. Here, here's the deal. All right, you got, you got four used T-mowers back there. And you got a big air fire back there. Now, I could take those items and see if we can get a decent trade value on it or try to sell them on the street and put it towards whatever we're purchasing.
Why, we're not using them?
They're, they're, they're beat. The four T-mowers are beat.
And we own, we own those.
We, you just wanna get rid of them, we're not.
They'll give us a, I mean, they might give you a grand apiece for them.
Fine, go out, if you can get that, that's fine, but that's got nothing to do with this. Yeah, I mean, you should do that.
But, but it would help us on this thirty-two thousand purchase, is all I'm saying.
If you get that, that's over and above. Let us decide on, on, on this thing as we got it. So the proposal is, four years, two hundred and four thousand each. First year, we pay thirty-two thousand dollars to buy some additional equipment. And then we'll take our chance on the gators is, next to, oh, we're gonna put those in the budget. No, I'm not putting them in the budget.
Two years, we'd have to put in fourteen thousand.
But we won't budget it.
Right, right.
Do I have to do a motion, or are we disagreeing, cause we gotta get the capital? We're, are we?
It's just operation, right.
Right, I think he's gotta get moving on this.
Yeah, we, we need to get it, we need to have an intent here.
It's, it's nine to ten months right now for equipment. Our lease expires in April, all they need is a letter of intent.
Okay, so I make a motion that we consider this as. I can't make a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make the motion to give a letter of intent to this company, so we can get moving on this, and we'll, and the, all right?
Yeah.
For option one.
For option one.
Option one, I second.
You got it, Ray? Do you understand?
Don't push it. I mean, I could get into this. Roberto's got his own cart, Sandy's got his own cart, Earl's got his own cart, Bob's got his own cart. Julie's got his own cart, Rigo's got his own cart.
And how do you expect these guys to get out and get to work?
They got their own personal carts assigned to them? Come on.
Well, yeah, yeah, because they.
Come on, Mike. Let's vote on this, shall we?
Public opinion, nobody here.
Public opinion.
Everybody left.
Jesus.
Supervisor Gilpin. Hello, Supervisor Gilpin? I'll tell you why. I am highly disappointed, but I'll say yes. Supervisor Hurley.
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips.
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick.
Yes.
President Brooks.
No. It's not what I wanted.
Okay, well.
I'm sorry, it's not what I wanted. I appreciate the efforts. But it's not, I, as far as I'm concerned, the district has a lot of equipment, and the golf has a lot of equipment, and we have not reduced it by one piece, basically.
Yeah, we did one.
We did one piece, excuse me. We only reduced it by one piece, and I think that's embarrassing.
Well, that's.
That's why I voted.
That's why we're bored.
Thank you.
But thank you, I really, I do appreciate your efforts on this.
I'll get back on the used stuff.
Now, okay, can I bring something else up while, while we're on this? The chipper. For the last.
Talk into your mic, please.
I'm done talking equip.
Well, I, I, okay, can I bring this up, though? I mean.
What?
I'll bring it up.
Thank you.
So, the chipper, the, the, the chipper is something, we've paid ten thousand dollars in rentals already this year for, when we did the tree trimming. Um, it's, Chris, I don't know how much FEMA's gonna help. I mean, what, basically, I know in Ocala, they brought it to the curb, it sat there for thirty, forty days, whatever it was. Um, but we have a pile right now just from the hailstorm that I need to rent a chipper again behind Doc Brown's house.
Yeah, you got piles all over the place.
Right, so that's, a- again, uh, I mean, you got, we're, we're gonna have to keep chipping. Uh, or, and we're saying if we have the chipper, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't spend fifteen thousand on it. We could probably buy a used chipper for fifteen thousand.
All right, Ray, what, Ray, what we're asking for, okay, is.
Who, whose side are you on? Are you on the board or are you with them?
It's a necessity.
If we get a fire over by the water tank, you won't have to worry about, uh, heating your water. I'm just telling you right now, cause the, cause all that stuff is leaning up by the water tank. We gotta clean that area up. We've been asking for a chipper for years, okay? And Jimmy, come up with a.
We were told, I, this boy was told that a chipper is the wrong thing to buy.
It was told.
Because there was personal damage that could be done to an employee, and we opted not to do it.
But we still rent one and I still use it.
Yeah.
What are we supposed to do with the?
I'm just, I'm just telling you what you guys focus.
They rent one and they use it, right?
I believe that.
Common sense.
How much does a chipper cost?
Well.
And why was it not in the conversation we just had?
What we would like to do, what we'd like to do, is let Jimmy see if he can find a used one, send our mechanics out to look at it, and spend around ten to fifteen thousand dollars instead of spending forty thousand. Now, that was Jimmy's idea, and I think it's a great idea. If we can find something used, can we go out, can we go out and get it? That's what we're asking.
I. It would just seem to me like a, a used one is asking for a lot of trouble, cause those things are.
They get wore out.
Hard on themselves.
They get wore out.
Do it any other way.
How much, how much do we spend on, on leasing?
We've already spent, what, ten thousand this year? And we, we need another one right now, so that's fifteen thousand dollars we're gonna spend. And I don't know how much the district, I mean, how much are you guys spending?
What would a four-year lease be?
We haven't, that, that was a purchase price. That, well, somebody will lease it. I mean, even if we gotta go through Everglades or whatever, I can get that number.
Get, get, get us that number and the purchase price number, and then come back.
Well, we have a pur, well, we have a purchase price, Beverly. It's forty thousand, forty, forty-six thousand of a brand new one. And we've had that for a couple of years, so.
Well.
You what?
We have, uh, we have a price for a new one for forty-six. That's why we thought we would maybe look into a used one. Cause it's not used every day either, so.
I agree, a used one is probably asking for trouble.
Well, I mean, hey, listen.
It's a dangerous piece of equipment.
I, 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 as, as long as it's still open, then I'll, I'll get pricing on it, yes. And I'll actually see if Everglades can add it too.
So for the third time, is there any other equipment conversations we have to have, or we have done?
No, sir, I'm done.
Give us one thing, but, I mean, I hate to bring it up, you, you keep getting mad at me, but.
Talk into the mic.
What?
Talk into the mic.
You guys can't hear me, there's something wrong. You all need to hear.
We want, we want everybody else to hear.
What I like to say is, um, why we were doing this, um, Bob Hiltz and Bob, um, uh, looked into new trucks, and I don't know if that was on the budget or not. But Bob, Bob, Bob.
We haven't done the capital yet, Mike.
Okay, well, I just want, okay, all right, okay.
Anything else on the district equipment update? Okay, so we've decided, we'll adjust the capital when we get to it.
Okay.
New business, discussion to and from board. I'm sorry?
You lost my piece of paper.
Go. Okay, we're at the budget workshop. Break, I had a call for a break. Two minutes, three minutes, three-minute break. Three.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right.
I can do a brief introduction on what we're gonna start with. Actually.
Actually.
Let me do the, you want, I'll do these two and you do the rest.
Okay.
What are we doing?
All right.
And I put some cheat sheets out.
The two summary pages, and then Chris is going to go through the actual budgets. So if you pull out the one that says budget summary, all funds.
It might be easier, I put a copy on your desk of the five pages we're looking at.
It'd be this one.
Yeah.
This one?
Should have been right under the rate case. It starts with the summary sheet, and I, so you don't have to thumb through the book and the different sections, it's all together.
I mean, you've seen this sheet before. What this sheet basically is, is based on the information that you have in front of you. This is the total summary of where we are for this coming year, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. So for example, we have total operating revenues of ten million, five hundred and seventy-eight thousand and change. We have total expenditures that we have been given so far of eight million, nine hundred and sixty-six, which, which gives us a little capital, or gives us additional monies of one million, six hundred and twelve thousand to spend. Then when you take in the capital as it. It comes to two million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Sorry. It says eight million in expenses?
I'm sorry. Yeah, the expenses right now are eight million, nine hundred and sixty-six. The revenue is ten million, five, so there's a million, six of money is not accounted for, not spent. You throw in the capital, which is two point one, we are overspending this year as it is in front of you by five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That's what this sheet tells you. The next sheet, which is the capital recap sheet, which is this one. Okay, that takes it out by five years. So basically, what this is, what this says is, the capital as it is today for the general fund utility and the golf fund is spelled years, that's what those numbers are. I have eliminated the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we'll get for the startup on the water facility or the water plant and for the drainage program. So that's not in there. And I've also eliminated the anticipated cost of the loans starting in the year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. So those are not in there, nor are there any additional revenues to cover that in there. So this is basically, if we didn't do the sewer and we didn't do the water plant, or the plant, this is what we would be dealing with. So if you look at the totals, for example, let's just do twenty-two, twenty-three. The total of the, is two million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five eighty-two. That's total of what you have of the papers in front of you. The budget, that one five seven five, that is actually the one six one two number, but I, I didn't change it every time we changed it. So it, it should be actually a little bit more. But that's why that one five seven five, I'm assuming that we're going to have the same ratio of expenses and revenues every year. So we're going to have every year approximately that one five seven five to spend for capital. So again, when you look at twenty-two, twenty-three, we're overspending our revenues by five hundred and forty-nine thousand. Okay, everybody with me on that? Plus or minus. Then the total excess, again, this is by Amanda. Amanda told Chris and myself that we had a million, seven million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand that we would start the year with in monies. If we set our six, if we set ourselves at six million dollars, it's going to be our, our level. We don't want to go below six. That left us with a million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand. So I, it's just a math process. We start this twenty-two, twenty-three with a plus of a million, six eight, six hundred and eighty-six thousand. You subtract that five forty-nine, that gives us what we're, that's a million, one hundred, one hundred and thirty-six, four, one eight. That means that we would have that total, that one one three six four one eight, plus six million. Okay, and then I just ran it all the way across. So if we did the capital as it is today, we would end twenty-six, twenty-seven with twenty-one thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars above six million, if it held, if all these numbers held.
But you had the big dip in twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah, the big dip in twenty-four, which we'll go through, that's basically the swimming pool. That's the pool. So any changes that we make today, we'll, I'll adjust the sheets so forth and so on, so that when we have our next meeting, you'll get a new total sheets. And with that, I'll let Chris take it from here. My recommendation, do the utility budget and then the utility capital, the golf budget, then the golf capital, and the general, you just, we're just going to be doing the capital for that. Since these guys are here, you should probably do golf first, so they don't have to hang out.
And you'll see the sheet with the golf fund capital, and that was revised from the comments from June third, from the last meeting. And of course, some changes that were made today under the improvements. We had fifty-five thousand in for that driving mat originally, and that would go down to thirty-five thousand. And the equipment lease, right now, it would stay at two oh four, two sixteen. We'll get the bottom line to come in. But you see all the projects and really moving forward under, under next year. You have a lot with clubhouse and bathroom painting and the columns and banquet room partition. But after that, there's really little to no improvements in the budget for those four years. And kitchen equipment was moved to the operating fund, and in three years, you'll have a replacement of all the china. But again, very few items in there. And mostly what you're, what you're looking at is cart path repair and the addition of riprap in high erosion areas. And we do have in the budget, the deer run ice machine and cabinets, but we are working on that right now. And I try to get that incorporated into the funding for the golf course for deer run. We'll take any of the comments and those, those decisions made by the board today on the equipment, and then we'll, we'll add in a price on the chipper to bring back on July eighth. And also all the information that we'll do with the general fund budget. I'm working with those staffs right now in utilities and the general fund. We'll get that information and upload it into a master budget that Infomark will provide to us that we'll start working on July eighth also.
Do we, do we have any updates on the five fifty? On the green loop?
I talked to Tony Ottman yesterday, Craig, and so he's saying if we stay with the wires that you currently have in the greens, that he can probably save us some money. So, yeah, he, well, I'll have it. He, he said I should have it by the end of the week, which is the end of the week, so I don't have it. But I mean, I, I suspect I'll have it the first of the week. Like I said, Andrew and them were here yesterday. We discussed it with Tony as well. Tony Ottman's the guy who's doing our engineering and everything, and he will be on property when we start initially. But he's trying to get that to me right now. But his, to be honest with you, I think that even if we do use our wire, it'll still probably be around the three fifty-four range.
What's the downside of using our current wiring?
Just if there was any splicing, or if they hit it in the past or whatever, the, I mean, it still works. I mean, that's like I told Tony yesterday, I'm not, I mean, if I don't have to run wire all the way through the golf course again, and it's just a matter of adding a saddle to a head, then let's get a price on it. I, I told him we would need to do it as least as we can.
And when, when I have those plans, we will be putting in an application for some cooperative funding to the water management district to demonstrate efficiencies of water use. And after our expenditure for deer run to make that system more efficient and use less water, I think they may look favorably on that, but we're going to give it a try.
And, and you see that as being ballpark?
What we would ask for would be fifty percent of the project, but they would probably cap it around a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it would help.
Yeah, well, yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not arguing.
And, and it's not a huge amount of work to put that application together. When we have those preliminary plans, we'll submit that in July for consideration, and then we'll find out in October if they're going to fund it or not.
Yeah, I should have it within the week.
Okay, so just, I guess on the capital, we're just going to change the equipment replacement to two oh four. We're going to add in a purchase of thirty-eight.
I, I suggest leaving the two sixteen alone if you're going to conserve that chipper.
Chipper, we can leave it.
But that's, I'm just saying, we're going to go up to that, if in fact you can lease it.
And just to note, in, in the first year, twenty-two, twenty-three, that equipment lease isn't going to start till April, so there's six months of the current lease and then.
That's why it's one eighty-five.
Correct.
Okay, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Do the regular budget.
All right, supervisors, I'll go through the, the adjustments we have here. So if you have it in front of you on page one, the first discussion we had on the driving range was the increases of pricing. Did have a discussion with Andy, and, and we decided to leave the small range bucket at six dollars, and we went up a dollar on the medium range bucket and the large bucket. The reason why, because the small bucket's thirty balls, six.
Where are you, what page number?
One.
Page number one, driving range.
Not my page one.
Sorry?
What, where?
Agenda two twenty-three.
It's agenda one eighty-seven. Page one of the golf budget.
Maybe tab eighteen in the board book.
You mean page eleven? This thing?
No.
Well, yeah, I'm on both, yes, you're correct. I, I'm on that. So on the, on the sheet, you'll notice that the large bucket is now thirteen, up from twelve. The medium bucket is ten, up from nine, which is in the middle of the page on the right-hand side. That was the.
What is the, what is the current prices?
The current price is six, nine, twelve, and we propose six, ten, thirteen.
And why didn't you want to raise the small one?
The, a small bucket is thirty, thirty balls, going up to seven dollars on thirty balls. We just felt was a little high. But also, you know, for the membership, you know, when they go to the range, you know, when they get their included balls, they're mostly getting small buckets anyway. So it was kind of, the discussion was, we didn't want to go up on the membership twice because some of the other charges there too, so.
We're the only game in town, aren't we? Basically, for a driving range, aren't we?
Yeah, so, so therefore, with, with all that being said, I, we did, I did raise that another three thousand dollars for driving range income. So it's at eighty-seven thousand. Yeah, they all have, they all have driving ranges. Highland Ridge has one, the Muni has one. No, the Country Cove Sebring has, they, they, they all have them. So moving on to page two, a lot of the, the restaurant revenue went up. We were talking about price increasing to maintain our cost of goods with, with increases. So you'll see an increase to food sales restaurant. You'll see an increase to alcohol, beer sales on the course, beer sales in the restaurant, wine restaurant, and liquor restaurant. That is to reflect price increases. That would increase the member pitcher beer to twelve dollars. So I extrapolated that out with current year sales based on the pricing increase. If we held the same sales, that's kind of where I generated those numbers from. So all those were adjusted accordingly on that page for that. That brought our total revenue, total food and beverage revenue from one point four four to one point five million. And total revenues. That number not reflected out, right? Yeah, so it was, yeah, one point four to one point five for total restaurant revenues. Off from there, so the next change, I did make a change on page, on page five on the credit card fees. The credit card fees are based off a percentage of revenues that we use. So obviously, with the increase in revenues on there, the, the credit card fees will go up a little bit. Now, that's only on things that people use credit cards when they purchase, so it's not.
What's your page five?
Page five is agenda page one ninety-one.
Is it G, general administration expense?
Yes, G and A expense.
Where, where?
Credit card fees. Due to the increase in revenue, I did bump that up a little bit. Another two thousand.
So that's an expense you took out.
That's an expense I added because of the increase in revenue, because credit card fees are based off the percentage of revenue, what you're using, you know, everything that goes on a credit card. Moving on to the golf course maintenance expense, I did make a small adjustment there in the, in the fuel. I did go up another twenty, eight hundred dollars in fuel just from, you know, I, I looked at some long-range projections for fuel. I just felt like what we had in there the first time, it just wasn't quite adequate, quit, so I did adjust that slightly. Food and beverage expenses, the.
You were proposing a management fee of one oh eight, if I remember right, that's too long ago. We still got it set at one twenty.
We're talking about the, the indigo, the indigo management fee? So back when you first started, when we had that discussion, when we had, you went through all the RFP, that was their proposal, but the board turned it down and chose to stick, stay with the normal contract that we have. There's been discussions about renegotiating our contract, which was way over my head, but the board, the board did decide to. That.
Was one hundred and eighty at that time?
Yes, but there was, there was some incentives in there, and I think that's why they, that's, there was performance incentives, which there is currently not in this contract. Again, this is definitely over, over my pay grade here, but that, that's up for you guys to decide if you want to renegotiate. But that is based on the current contract. Where are we? That was golf course maintenance. Kitchen supplies, I did add another two thousand dollars for there. Just the trend with inflation right now is, is keeping us, if you notice on our current plan, we're, we're struggling to, to maintain our budget right now, so I did move that slightly as well. No change in sales and marketing, no change in leases. That, that's all the changes that I made. So overall, if you go to the summary page, that puts the, I'm on page nine or agenda page one ninety-five. So the net income for golf did go down slightly to four forty-one based on some of those, the credit card fees and the, the two thousand dollars for fuel. And the restaurant adjusted from negative two fifty-six down to negative two seventeen, with the bottom line being, the net income being positive two twenty-three overall, basically two twenty-four. Does anybody have any questions on the changes that I submitted?
Any questions? I'm still rather disappointed in the golf. The restaurant number I'm okay with. The golf number, based on last month, or based on the report we just signed off on, you're estimating your profit on golf's going to be four fifty-one. And now you're telling us that next year is four forty-one.
So the four fifty-one that you're going off of was in the April financials?
It's whatever the.
The April financials, so don't forget that the.
That's your estimation.
Correct, so the April financials did, did not reflect the increase for that fertilizer application, so that's going to bring that down. That's definitely going to drop that overall projection. You got to remember that those financials were, were kind of always a month lagged. So when we, when we, those financials were coming out, we had not approved that price increase, so therefore, it was not in that forecast when that budget came out, or that, when those financials came out. That number will go down. In this estimation right here, on this page, the estimated actual for the net income for this current year of four thirty-eight, that's probably closer.
Well, 438 is close. You only think you can pick up $3,000 in golf?
Well, you've got to remember, our expenses went up a bunch too.
We gave you 5% in memberships too.
Right, but we also went up, you know, we had a lot of cost increases on the maintenance side too.
It's probably 23%.
Yep. The maintenance.
What?
The maintenance.
Yeah. Plus we added, but you've got to remember, we added, we added a second.
Well, you've got to plan that 11%.
Right, but the board, but the board actually.
Two or three.
The board actually opted to do a second full wall-to-wall application of fertilizer too. So if you took that out, that's, that's a, that's a $45,000 swing right there. So.
Hey, I'm just telling you, to me, it's disappointing that we can't make any money in the golf.
In order, in order to compare this year's budget to next year's budget, you've got to add that $45,000 onto this year's budget because we did not spend that last year. So basically, that's a pretty fair, that's a fairly decent increase. It's probably, yes.
What, the application was covered?
Not, but.
Yes, it was. We gave you $50,000 or $60,000 to oversee. We gave you that money to oversee. You never overseed it.
Not in this current budget.
Yes, absolutely. Did you oversee it in November?
No.
Well, was there money in the budget for it?
No.
Michael, Michael.
There was, there was, we pulled it out, the seed.
It was in the budget.
The seed in the budget was just for the tees, the driving range of tees.
Did we pull it off?
I think we pulled it out.
It was, it's definitely not in there. I know it's not.
I don't think we took it.
Of course, I'm old, I can't remember.
Okay.
I think we took it out.
Okay. I'll just go on record, it's still disappointing. You should be embarrassed that you can't make money in golf.
Well, it's positive $441,000. And again, we added another $40,000 in expense just for, for that. Plus, we added the cost of fuel increases, the cost of anything related to fuel increases as far as fertilizer.
Figure out a way to get more revenues. I'm not, I'm not questioning your, your costs. Figure out a way to get more revenues. Don't charge some other guy's $24. Charge him 26.
Is that the same rate as this last past year?
I'm not, I'm not sure what reference in Tanglewood.
I'm saying, charge more and get more money for the, for the rounds that are played. There's a lot of ways to do this. Don't go to six, take the buckets from six to seven. What is the difference between six and $7? You think somebody's going to say, I'm not going to pay seven? I mean, come on.
I mean, it's very possible.
Mike, if they're going to pay six, they're going to pay seven. How do you do with the yearly buckets? Where you do that buy 10 and get one, whatever it is. Why don't you raise those prices?
Raising that price does not, doesn't change your revenue. You mean when we, when we give them $100 for 125?
Well, you raise how much it costs them to buy.
Change it to 125 and get 150, but they're still.
Why wouldn't you get more money if you raised the price?
Because you're, you're only getting what you charge for the bucket. You don't actualize the money until they hit the range machine.
If you can't figure out a way to get more money, that's fine.
Well, we increased the revenues.
You increased the revenues by 3,000, by, by, I'm sorry, you decreased.
$80,000.
You decreased from budget number one by $2,000. Your golf revenue, your golf profit.
The proposed budget was 2, 2780 and it's 2783 for the second one. It went up three grand.
Your proposed budget one was 443,000, your proposed budget two is 441,000.
Going off of our estimated actual for this year, it's $160,000 increase in revenue.
I'm not talking this year. I'm talking next year.
Correct. It went up from budget proposal number one, but it went up $100,000 from prior year. I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's not. If we do 35,000 public rounds, then that's $3 a round.
I'm not talking this year, I'm talking next year. This is a budget for next year. You're saying that you can't make any more money in golf than you did this year, basically.
I'm not looking at the same numbers you are then.
What are you not looking at?
Did group rates go up?
The group rates, the group rates change every year. They typically go up at least a dollar every year.
Michael, your estimated profit in golf this year, according to this sheet, is 438,040.
That is correct.
And your plan for next year is 441,668.
Correct.
It's an increase of $3,000.
Correct, but we also added 50 or 60,000 worth of expenses for the extra Fird app and the, and the extra stuff.
So you just want to add the expenses and not try and recoup them?
But we're, you're comparing apples to oranges here. If you take that $40,000 out, that's a, that's a $45,000 increase.
Well, if this was my company, I'd have a tough time adjusting to your.
Well, if you want to take the second Fird app out, which I don't think the board does, that number will go up 40.
It's not all expenses.
It'll go up $45,000 if you take that second Fird app back out, but the board at the last meeting said they wanted to do it.
I'm done, I'm done. Anybody have any other comments?
Did the Tanglewood prices go up?
From prior year or going to next year?
Going into next year.
So we haven't, we haven't gave them a proposal for next year, but I'm sure it certainly will, yeah. But that's, I've already, well, me, well, as we go through this process right here, we'll, we'll definitely be doing that for sure.
So, so Michael, if you go up into Tanglewood's, what do you expect to make how much more?
I'd have to, if I went and pulled the numbers for how many rounds they did this year, I would have that. I just, I don't have it in front of me.
Could you just check that and see where we are? I mean, I don't.
I think he thinks we're losing, and he's probably right.
I mean, it's, I mean, they understand that price increases, all the clubs are, will increase their, their rates every year, but if you.
I.
If, if.
What I don't like about Tanglewood.
If you're not in the same pace as everybody else, they will go, yes.
What I don't like about Tanglewood, and I've been listening to this for a long time, it seems like they hold a gun to our head every time because they bring these people in. Well, you know what? Let them pull the trigger then.
I mean, I've been in this market for almost 20 years. I, I understand that market very well. I've, I've dealt with them for 20 years. It's, it's definitely.
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can just end this real quick. If this was your company and you made $10 last year, and it cost you in expenses $5, and you told your boss that you're going to accept $10 this year, but my, my expenses are going to be eight or $7.50 or $8, and you're going to make less money, how do you think you'd react?
Well.
I'm just asking, how would you react?
Well, you've got to remember here that, that the board had requested to add that. I did not. Well, we recommended it, but the board said that they wanted to have that extra expense.
Who's responsible for the maintenance of that?
Right, right.
You guys are.
Correct.
You keep saying that we did this.
We, you were okay with us putting it in there. We recommend to do that, but if we're comparing this year to last year, you've got to remember, last year, we didn't do that, we didn't do that second app. So, so that.
If it was your company.
I would raise prices on.
To try and cover it.
You would raise.
Of course you would.
Jimmy, what, you would raise prices where? I didn't.
You know, you either got revenue or you got expenses.
Right.
If my expenses are not being covered, or I'm not yielding enough money.
Right.
The one way to get there next to raise your fees, that's the only way.
Then raise them.
I'm not saying you can cover it all.
They are, they are.
But you're, but you're not raising them at all.
Right.
If you just look at golf revenue.
Okay.
Total gross revenues.
If that's the best you can do.
Estimated actual for this year is 20, is 2.9 million, estimated, this proposal is 3.1.
Yeah.
That's $200,000 increase in revenue, close to it.
Yeah, and it's $200,000 increase in expenses.
Correct.
Well, usually for most companies, that doesn't work. I'm just telling you. I guess we're the exception.
I think you're going to be good to make those numbers with recession, that would absolutely, and you guys think you don't have a recession, don't you? I think you'll be doing good.
Okay. Anybody want to make any changes, or we good with the budget as it is, with those few adjustments to capital? Okay, thank.
I'm not, I'm not satisfied, but I still think you more to be adding to the restaurant side of business, and I, I'd have to agree with Ray. I think there's more available on, on the golf side.
Where the people are getting.
Mark.
Where the people are getting.
I mean.
The phone is down. Everything is costing up.
Can you hear them? Can you hear what they're saying? I can't hear them.
The gas tank?
She's talking to Greg. She's not talking here.
Huh? I can't hear them.
What?
I will let it go for this pass. I, I just. Okay, thank you.
So for, for the next budget discussion, what did you get, does the board want me to bring back anything different?
If this is the best you can do, I don't want you to do anything.
Okay.
We'll change your capital, and I guess unless the board has any objections, we'll leave the rest as it is.
If that's.
I mean.
Like you said, if that's the best you can do.
I mean, if, if.
There's ways to charge it.
If I had a vote of five, I'd tell you to increase the revenues by $100,000, go do it. Or decrease the, or decrease the expenses by $100,000.
Would you allow him to do it though, Ray, if he brought it to you and said, even the membership has to be added, or the street number has to be added, or the prices in the restaurant?
I'm talking the golf, the restaurant's fine.
Okay, so the golf, the only two incomes we add is going to be your membership and your daily.
I've already given them 5% for membership. I'm not giving them anymore. I already gave them 5%. Well, we did, not me. We already said 5%. That's $50,000 or $60,000.
But the cost of doing business is higher this year.
Well, then he's, then he's got to figure out a way to get more money from the 4,000 rounds that are played outside of the membership.
Right, well, we did a 7% increase on outside.
On the.
Public revenue.
Rounds. And that's pretty, I mean, that's pretty norm. I mean, outside of going up higher than that, I mean, you'll price yourself out of where they won't even be here. Because it's hard to know.
There ought to be a way that we attract more members though, too, I can tell you that. I, I don't think we're doing anything to attract the members.
Right.
Well, I, our.
I, I'm sorry, but to only have 121 family membership and the few that we have, the rest, I just.
Yeah.
I mean, you move the numbers around based on this and that, but you're, you're talking about going up five members.
Because of the attrition?
In total, five, over what your current, your forecast or your budget. Well, budget says in section 13 over there. But we do, I think we need to come up with some way to sell the membership.
I mean, at some point.
More people than what we have here.
It's, I mean, we have, we have about 500 members that are available to book a tee time any given day. And at some point, you, you got to, you definitely need to weigh the options and make sure that we are a semi-private club. So if, there's a point where our membership can be too high, where we don't have any available tee times to sell to the public, which is at a higher rate. You know, we look at the KPIs and the member, the, an average rate for a member is $20 or.
That's that point, right.
So.
We're not there. I don't believe we're there.
At, at 500? The, we're, the balance between member rounds and member, member rounds, public rounds, membership revenue and public revenue is the most balanced, on this budget's the most balanced that it's ever been. In the past, the membership paid, played 60% of the rounds and brought in 40% of the revenue, which is, that's not, that is, that is, right. So that, that's an imbalance. On this budget, it's about 55, 45. So it's about the closest that that's been balanced. I mean, obviously, you'd probably want it to be in the 50/50 range, or if the membership's paying 60% of the rounds, they should be paying 60% of the revenue.
Correct.
You know, so it's, this, in this budget, you know, and I've, you know, this is my second or third budget here through, through the board, but I've seen the budget for the past eight years, this is the most balanced it's ever been.
Any other comments? Okay.
And I don't have a solid budget put together for utilities or general fund. I'm going to have to bring that back on the, on July 8th. So I'm still meeting with staff to get some hard numbers, really for both of these. You're, you're kind of looking at a few changes that we made, but it's not detailed enough, I think, to go into a detailed discussion about those numbers. So it'll be July 8th till I have those. But similar to that, you're going to be looking at expense side going up because of the fuel and the equipment operating. And we're looking at ways to cut some expenses also.
So this utility budget's not ready?
No.
No? Okay. What about the capital?
Capital's pretty tight. We're, we're looking at, for the utility side, yes, we went over it last time, and we believe all those items are included in on the utility side. And as, when we bring that final rate case document, we may make a couple of changes on the water side that would impact that, and adding in some manhole repair issues. But that'll, that'll really be four or 5% change in items, nothing significant.
That's all?
Four or 5%?
And luckily, it looks like we'll have about $600,000 worth of capital costs and projects paid for by ARPA money in the next year. So we'll be getting a lot of work done one way or the other.
Well, how about the, the utility capital plan that we have spelled out here?
Right.
Is that correct or not?
Yes, the only, the only thing that I had is, we had some manhole replacements in 22, 23 at 220,000, and we'll probably add a couple manholes each of the year in that capital for 23, 24 in those three following years.
When are you going to put it in?
For the 8th.
And that's in addition to the $100,000 that you already have in the budget, correct?
Correct.
Are you taking it out of the budget and just going to make it a capital item?
It's either going to be on the operating side or the capital side. And.
Well, if it's an every-year expenditure, it should be in the budget. If it's over and above, because there's a problem, that's what capital's for. That, you have to tell us.
Yeah.
I don't have the answer to that. You have the answer.
In, in the utility world, typically capital is, is new items you're putting in and constructing and other things are operational because you're just repairing them and replacing them. It's not pure capital. You're building a new plant, you're putting in a totally new lift station. So it's a little different than your interpretation of capital because, again, the utility, it would be replacing a manhole and fixing one would be an operating expense, R and R.
Which way do you want it?
Put it in the operating.
Then put it there.
Okay.
What else do you want to move? I mean, let's get it all out in the open so we know what we're talking about. So you're going to take that 220 out, put it in the regular budget.
Right.
And it's going to become a yearly deal. So you're going to increase the budget by whatever.
Right.
What else do you want? I mean, we have to get an accurate number here. That's the whole purpose of this exercise.
I think beyond moving that item, that we've covered them all in our operations budget, it's been moved over.
So the rest of them stay where they are?
Yes.
Or they all moved?
No, they would stay, that's, that's the only one. And the infiltration line repairs, that's, that's been forever in there, under quarter million dollars a year. And that, that's in there because, again, depending on how you're looking at it, I, I consider it R and R, but it's traditionally been in the capital here.
Listen.
Right.
You're the district manager.
Okay.
Put it where you want it.
Okay. Well, I'll move all of it into operating then, and only the new stuff.
So we get a, I, I just want an accurate picture of what we're going to spend.
Right. Well, the numbers are accurate, it's just where they're located.
Put it where you want it.
Okay.
Anything else? Do we want to talk, so utility, the regular budget, you don't want to talk about even, Joey, you're going to check that sludge thing out? Would you have a better number?
I was talking. I was talking with Chris. We're trying to come up with an average for season, non-season.
I was talking with Chris. Um, we're trying to come up with an average for season, non-season. Thinking season's gonna go up a little more. Obviously, out of season, it's gonna be variable, so trying to get a har, better estimate on the yearly.
You've got a yearly budget. It says right now thirty thousand. You've spent so far, gazillions more than thirty thousand. I just want the number in there that you're gonna need for a year.
I understand that.
How you arrive at it, that's up to you and Chris, but I'd like to have that number in there.
I understand.
And we're also looking at trying to make some process improvements on that plant with some controls and pumpage where we can keep that figure more reasonable versus having to have that sludge taken off-site, pay expensive disposal for it, to where we could possibly just move it to our other plant and have it processed there versus paying the pumpage and landfill costs to dispose of it.
Okay, so I guess we're done with the utility until next time? Hopefully, we'll have a.
Hard numbers.
Better prepared report?
Yes, sir, and we'll also have, have those hard numbers in that utility rate case.
Okay, then the only other thing that I'd like to go over before we call it a day is the equipment request of six hundred thousand from Bob in the general fund, which we all got, I believe, copies of, correct?
Right.
What the items are. Let's just run through those to make sure we're okay with them so that next time we'll get a better number, or a different number, if necessary.
And, and Bob was working from, uh, that five-year plan that was put, put together by his predecessors, and, and that's where that, all that information came from and where you have all those pieces of equipment listed.
Yeah, that, I, I did change a few things, but that's basically what it was. It was a previous five-year plan. Well, run through the items. If, if they're good, explain to us what, what you want to do so we know.
Well, we did have a replacement of a gator, uh, that's replacing one that was, uh.
It's my favorite one.
That had fifty-one hundred and eighty-eight hours on it. It was, uh, two thousand and eleven, but, uh, I guess we're not replacing any gators this year, so that, we. It's in your packet, but it can be taken out.
So that's the gator for fifteen thousand?
Yes.
That can be taken out.
And then I, uh, would like to keep, uh, all four of the mowers that we were gonna trade in for the two mowers. It turns out that, that, that we were gonna, I had talked to you previously about keeping the two, two newest ones, but I got a new, uh, um, payout plan from Westco Turf that lowered the amount that we were gonna get for the other two mowers by fifteen hundred dollars. So we might as well keep all of them. They're, they're worth more than, uh, five thousand dollars for those two mowers, for sure.
Do we have anything on this, on the mowers? Is there anything here, in here on the mowers?
Yeah.
But this is the original.
It should be.
When they purchased, when they just purchased. But he was.
They.
Sixteen thousand to buy. Right.
Now that amount is fifteen hundred dollars less than that trade-in value, so I don't see a reason to trade, trade them in for that amount of money. Well, the two of them, they're, are still in good shape, and, and I had nothing to do with that trade-in. Uh, that was done before. I think that was Omar's decision to do that, but it just doesn't make any sense to trade those vehicles in, uh, when they're still operating well and, and not having any issues.
How much does it cost not to trade them in?
Uh, well, it'd be sixteen thou, fourteen, fourteen thousand, five hundred is what we would have to. That would be the difference now. It would have been sixteen, but they lowered the amount of the, value of the two. Any questions about those?
So this is the sixteen thousand, it gets reduced by fifteen hundred?
Yes, correct, correct.
Go ahead.
Uh, the next thing I'd like to try to get is a mosquito fogger. We have two of them. One of them is inoperable, um, and I'm not sure what's wrong with it. It's just, they, they tell me that it doesn't work. It's, it's a.
What, what is the name of that piece?
That's a mosquito fogger. It should be the next item on your list. It's a ULV, Guardian ULV, um, fogging machine. Uh, the price of that is eighty-five hundred dollars. We have one that's operating right now, that we just got calibrated and it's in good shape, but that would allow us to do twice as much fogging in, in same amount of time.
Oh, my God. I don't even see it.
It should be, uh, right after the equipment.
Right after the Westco Turf trade-in value on those four mowers. Uh, it has mosquito fogger.
Oh, there it is.
Right here.
In this package when we're talking about the mowers.
It's near the back.
But, yeah. Yeah. That is there.
How much was that?
Eighty-five hundred. Eighty-five hundred.
But that, well, that is for the twenty-two, twenty-three.
Well, can you explain how much trouble we have with the other one, please?
Well, the, the.
This packet that came out with the, what, about eight or five thousand dollars?
The one that we're replacing is, uh, it's, it's. It works about a tenth of a time. We, we take it out, uh, it clogs up, it doesn't wor, it just, it just doesn't work. So we, that's one we want to replace. If the other one goes down, then we don't have any fogger at all.
And do you use two at the same time, or you just have one panel as a backup?
We have one as a backup.
Okay.
Um, I think it's, we got that one in around, it's probably about fourteen years old. So it's, it's probably past its.
Okay.
Ability to be repaired at, at a, you know, a reasonable. Uh, the next thing is a diamond skid steer brush cutter. Uh, it's an attachment. I'm, I apologize for not having a picture of that. It goes on the front of the skid steer, and we have a mulcher attachment now, and it's, uh, uh, it goes like this. It's your drum. This is like a, a regular mowing deck. It's got flail blades. It'll cut, uh, brush up to like six inches thick. We would be able to use it for going along ditches and, uh, areas that we can't get to with a regular mower. It'd be on, on tracks.
We don't have anything like it?
No, we don't.
No.
This is a piece of equipment that I think Drew had suggested. He called it a sidearm mower, but it's really a front end, a front attachment for the skid steer. Cause I, I saw in the budget, uh, there was a twelve thousand dollar piece of equipment that he had listed as a skid, uh, side, uh, mower, but this is, I think, what he was talking about, because that's what he, he had told me that it was an attachment for the skid steer, and that's the only kind of a mower blade that does that.
Okay, we okay on that?
I guess.
Next.
And then, uh, for the next year, twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, we need to, uh, look into replacing our lift. Our lift, uh, does, it goes to thirty-five feet and it's, we bought it used, and, uh, I'm not sure when we bought it, what year it was, two thousand and seven. It's a two thousand and seven lift. It works. It, it's, uh, we've had to replace the battery several times and had to have it serviced and, uh, so that's the reason for, for, uh, that request.
What exactly we lift?
We use it to trim palm trees, uh, put banners up on the, on the boulevard as well as on Edgewater. Uh, we use it for quite a lot of things.
They, they use it for Christmas lights. They use it for, uh, trimming palm trees. Uh, I mean, it's used a lot, but not every day, Ray.
You wanna go to a fifty-foot boom instead of thirty?
Yeah, that, the, the, uh, there's a couple of reasons for that. Some of the, uh, we just had a pine tree that had a branch that was hanging down that was broken over by the dog park, pretty good-sized branch, and we were able to cut off part of it, but our lift wouldn't go up high enough to reach the, the base of the tree where the branch was hanging, so we had to have, uh, a tree company come in and remove that.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the next item.
What?
I was looking at the next item.
For as often as we utilize.
Can you talk in? I can't hear you down here.
I'm sorry. For as often as we utilize this, uh, boom, is, is renting one in line?
Well, sometimes they're not available for renting, and if we have, uh, if we have one on hand, then it just makes it a lot more convenient and a lot easier to do the jobs as we need them.
I understand that, but is it more cost-effective to rent? For, for the amount of time that we utilize one, I'm, that's all, I'm just asking. I don't know the answer to this.
We, we have rented them in the past. We have done that, and I don't know what the cost of the, that was. That's something I can look into and, and come back to it, but I, I can't tell you what the, the.
We've rented them in the past. We have rented them in the past, a taller one, uh, to get to the antenna at, uh.
Mike, talk into the.
Oh, sorry about that. We have rented them in the past, and yes, maybe that's, that's the way to go to save some money is to rent, but the problem is, um, um, a few of the times we rent them, they're not the best machine in the world, so, you know, we had trouble with them, and that's, you know.
I mean, if it's, if, the one we have is two thousand and seven, so that's fifteen years old. I don't mind spending thirty-five thousand if we're gonna get fifteen years out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it.
And it was used anyways, the one we bought originally.
Okay, I'm okay with that one.
Okay.
Okay. I can't wait for the next one, no. I know Hurley hasn't seen it, but let's, let's bring it to Hurley's attention. What's the next one?
It's a chipper.
A chipper?
Yeah.
Oh, my!
That's in, uh.
What is that? You didn't even know what it was one meeting.
So, let's see, the golf people can have a chipper, and now the district can have a chipper?
Well, this is.
Well, we're buying it togeth, no, we're both using it together. We're not buying two. If you read your notes and pay attention, we're buying it for everybody, for both departments.
Then why, why did we have? Why, why is it in both budgets then?
Because Jimmy, because when Jimmy and I got talking about it, that's when he asked about, well, maybe we can buy a used one. That's why we brought it up. We're only buying one. And I don't care who buys it, if Ray Brooks buys it, or the district.
We've even talked about splitting the cost of it between the, the two departments.
It, you guys can do whatever you want. It still costs in the district forty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, while when we first originally got the, got the quote three years ago, until somebody stuck their nose in it, it was only thirty-six thousand. So, just so you know that.
The prices are going up.
I don't know why, why Jimmy bring it up if it was already in here?
Because Jimmy and I had talked about it during the equipment, and he brought it up. He said, I gotta go rent another chipper, and Chris and I have talked about it, and I asked Chris, where is our chipper? It was in the budget, and he couldn't find it in the budget, right, Chris?
Well, I guess it is in the budget. Okay.
Okay.
We've already had a chipper conversation. Next.
Two, two years from now, it's in the budget.
Yeah, it's not, it's not anytime soon. Uh, so we're requesting a four-wheel-drive pickup truck to replace a two thousand and seven, uh, four-wheel-drive pickup truck, and that's just the guess at the cost of that. This is twenty-four to twenty-five, so that's two years from now. And, and, um, I just put down forty-eight thousand because the, there's no telling how much it'll cost. That's just a, a guideline.
We got two years left on the one we got.
We can get, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's, that's correct. And then, uh, we want to replace the next one, the batwing mower, replacing a two thousand and sixteen batwing mower. They are used pretty much every day, and they're, uh, there's a lot of, uh, of, uh, hard work that goes into those. They, the, the bearings go out, the drive shafts go out, the, the powered PTOs, um, it's a lot of moving, so that.
It'd be ten years old, but it's nine years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. And then, uh, replacing a, a four-wheel-drive tractor in that same year. It's a, uh, two thousand and eleven tractor that we will be replacing. By then, it'll be about fourteen years old.
How many hours will it be, John?
Uh, I don't know what the hours are. Uh, I can find that out, too.
I mean, is it?
Yeah, they're used every day, pretty much, the, the tractors are. So they would have a, a pretty good amount of hours on it. Now, by the time this comes around to, to, two, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, pretty sure we're gonna need a, another gator to replace one of the two that we have that are two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve. So they'll be fourteen, fifteen years old, and they'll be getting to the end of their life expectancy, especially the one that's already got fifty-one hundred hours on it.
And your gator's different from the other gator?
These different.
From the ones at the golfers?
They're a couple of different, they're, they're a little heavier duty. They're, they're, uh, four-wheel-drive. I'm not sure if Jimmy's got four-wheel-drive.
And yours costs twice as much as the golf ones?
No, Jimmy's, the, the ones that Jimmy has, does not ha, have four-wheel-drive, and he doesn't have, uh, roofs on, uh, most of them.
So these cost twice as much. So why don't we get ones without roofs? I mean, why do I have to pay twice as much for a gator for him than I am for the golf people?
Well, this is, this is also a few years out.
I'm sorry?
This is a few years out. I'm not sure if that's gonna be an accurate price then. Who knows? It might be less.
Right.
Man, it's just, uh, you know, I'm just, uh, think, trying to think of things to keep our fleet as in, in as good a condition as possible.
I understand.
Uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, I'm requesting a new, uh, dump truck, four-wheel-drive dump truck to replace a two thousand and seven dump truck that they're used pretty heavily. Also in that year, I'm requesting a, uh, a three-sixty Grounds Master mower, four-wheel-drive mower to replace a two thousand and three Grounds Master, which is, um, one of the ones that, one of the older ones we're keeping. And then in, uh, twenty-twenty-six to twenty-twenty-seven, I got in a request for another four-wheel-drive pickup truck to replace the other two thousand and seven F-150 truck, four-wheel-drive truck we have. And also in that year, uh, backhoe, front-end loader to replace our two fifteen, two thousand and fifteen backhoe, which will be ten years old by then, and they're used by all the different departments.
I'll give you credit. Your, your equipment lasts a lot longer than the golf's equipment.
Well, we, we, uh, we have better mechanic. No, no. It's a different type of usage. You know, the golf courses are, they're very precision machines, and they, uh, have to be, the, the, the technology and the, uh, pr- precision has to be ju, be able to adjust it to a certain amount. So they mow greens at an eighth of an inch, the height of the grass is an eighth of an inch.
I do have a general question on, on your equipment. Uh, this is, uh, I'm doing this for Mr. Kilpin, because I'm sure he would have brought it up eventually. Do we have a piece of equipment that would actually clean the, the area behind the clubhouse?
No.
Along the water? That every time we go in there, it becomes a disaster area?
Yeah, there, the.
No, we don't have.
There's a company that can do that, and they have a kind of a, it's a semi-amphibious-type thing that I've been looking at. I've, I've been think, thinking about that, too, ever since we've mowed over there and make big ruts and make a big mess.
We've got to, we've got to figure out a way to address that. It's just horrible looking.
Yeah. Yeah, we can look into, there's a, there's a.
Well.
I don't know.
Well, what was, uh, suggested a couple of years ago is to go in there, bring fill in, raise it up, right, because it's so wet there all the time, raise it up, and then, um, you know, plant the grass. Right now, it's just too low.
It needs fill.
It needs fill.
Well, build a wall.
Well, you can't build the wall to you. Right, we'll build a wall. Good idea.
You can't build a wall to what?
You gotta fill it in first. You gotta go in there, dig it out, put a.
You don't go all the, I'm saying where it is now.
Yeah. Ray, I like your idea. I agree with you today.
I, I would like for you to figure out a way to address this area.
Okay, I'll, I'll definitely see what we can do about that.
I agree.
We don't really have a piece of equipment we can put in there that won't make a big mess.
If you gotta hire somebody, hire them.
Yeah.
I mean, the best time, I would think now, it's summertime, so wait until the, we get into September.
Yeah, when it dry, gets drier.
It's not crazy, and have them come in and clean it out.
Yeah. It would be nice if that pond would go down a little bit, but it's got, it's spring-fed, so it doesn't ever fluctuate.
If anything, it's gonna go up, isn't it?
Yeah.
We have to raise the back area of the clubhouse up to get, to get what you want, and we've talked about that many times.
Didn't we have just a remote control?
It gets stuck in there. It gets stuck. We actually, uh, the last time they used it, they buried it, it just went right down in.
It's so muddy over there. It's so muddy over there, it's, you can't really get any kind of a
Figure out a solution. And if it's gonna cost money, bring it to us, but you can't let it go.
It would be a beautiful place if we could fix it.
Right.
And a wall is a great idea to finally come up with a good idea, I like that.
And we'll see what we can come up with for that.
Thank you.
Bob, I got, I just got one comment and I, I didn't tell Chris about this, but he might have something to do with this. But I've noticed the last two, three weeks, maybe a month, that in my little world, from here to the clubhouse, uh, it looks a lot better. I I've noticed a lot of work going on around the dog park in that area, along the trench, going, you know, I just, I just want to compliment you if you're the one or tell Chris about it, but the places, uh, I noticed the other day they're trimming trees that were brown, hanging things from the palm, I mean, it it just looks so much better and I appreciate who's ever doing it. I I just wanted to pass that on.
Well, we all work together, so I'll pass that along as well, thank you.
Just one other thing while I'm thinking about it, to Mike's point, when we go through your budget next time, I I I am very concerned that we don't support the, uh, give, give proper dollars to landscaping and upkeep throughout the district. And I'd like for you to look at that, both of you, and make sure that the dollars are adequate for what we, what we'd be proud of.
Yeah.
And I, I think we spend way too low on what we allocate.
No. Are you gonna bring up his, his vehicles and your vehicle?
Uh, well, Bob, Bob was going to talk about that.
Bob, what's that?
He wants to bring something up, what what he found.
Bob's got
Well, what he researched on
Did he look into replacing the security vehicle, the security truck?
Let him
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Your security vehicle.
Oh.
I know you've been here for three hours, but
Yeah, um, the security truck is gonna have about two hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it by the time we're ready to get rid of it and it's, we usually try to replace it every two years. We actually got another year out of it this year than we have in the past. And I've been in several conversations with, um, our Ford dealer, Jarrett Ford, where we usually get our cars from. Um, and he kind of, we kind of went over a price, but we're still not, um, we can't even, he he did some estimates from me and I've been back and forth with him probably five or six times and every time I come, it's a different price because he doesn't know. But we're, he he can nail it down in the middle of July, the second week of July is the time when they, when they can build out the new vehicles and he can tell us exactly. But he gave me a price of forty-one oh seventy-one um, for a truck and the concession, the lowest it will be is fifty-two hundred, but it, he said he expects it to be a little higher, which we get that government concession because we're a municipality. And they've offered us eighteen thousand dollars for our truck for trade. And I've even, I even drove the truck up there and actually showed it to him to make sure of that. So he said, yeah, he's still in the ballpark at eighteen thousand, so, um, after concessions and the, then there's, um, what they call a value increase of four to seven percent. Every year the value of the trucks go up. So I I split it right down the middle at five point five and it was like one thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And actually the total price was, um, nineteen thousand seven seven eighty-six was after our trade. So, and we budgeted thirty thousand dollars for for the truck.
Yeah. Good, so you budgeted thirty, you're gonna spend nineteen?
Exactly.
With the trade-in, right?
With the trade-in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, you want me to explain the second half of this?
Oh, there's more?
Yes.
I do.
Very briefly. Next year or the year after, we're gonna replace the code truck because of its age. And because of the re- the trade-in value of it right now, um, we could do a lot better, um, getting rid of it this year than holding on to it for two more years, considering the trade, he'd give us twelve thousand dollars for it. And after the trade's all said and done, it would be sixteen thousand five oh four is what we would end up with the value increase and the trade, we'd end up spending about sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand five oh four, which if we spend sixteen thousand five oh four this year rather than thirty-five thousand next year.
What's behind door number three?
Door number three is the total. You budgeted thirty thousand dollars for the car, for thirty-six thousand two ninety, we can replace both of them. And originally we had thirty, I can't remember, the original budget was thirty-seven thousand.
What's in the budget now?
Thirty. We lowered it to thirty because we went down because we we were, um,
Do we need two?
Not that, do we need two? One, we absolutely do need. But secondly, it was just a savings, was just, it was just an option I wa- I was going to let, bring it to you because it could be a savings.
I don't know what you guys think.
I think it's good to look at anyways, I mean, not that we have to do it, we know we gotta get one, okay? But the savings to get both of them this year is unbelievable. And that's why I said, bring it to the board and explain to them what what you found.
So for additional seven thousand dollars, you get two?
Yeah, for the additional seven thousand dollars, we could, we could replace two of them.
Right, and we have all and we have all the warrant, and we have all the warranties with
Of this in the budget, because we could only spend twenty thousand and get a new truck instead of thirty thousand.
Right.
But the
But next year we'd spend thirty thousand dollars on the code truck.
Let's do this.
If in fact they are offering the same kind of
Exactly.
Let's do this, it's, it's easier for me at least, when, if I can see it on paper in front of me. Why don't you get together with Chris? And come back when we do budgets next time and and make that part, whichever one you guys want to stay entertained, make that part of your presentation.
Perfect.
And we'll decide.
See?
Well, actually, I think if Chris and I could drive up to the Ford dealer in the middle of July, once the build date comes, we can, we can actually have this cut in stone. And actually, actually, they could actually write the deal and we could present it to you right then of what it would cost, what it would cost us.
But we haven't agreed to it yet.
Right, I know, but I mean, we would just bring a cost to you, what it would cost us to make that agreement.
That's what he's asking you to do.
Yes, that's what we're gonna do. But it would be around the middle of July is when, is the, is the soonest I could get those.
Well, when you get it
Put the best thoughts into the budget for the next
For the next, I want to see something July eighth. Make your best guess, if you have to adjust it the next time.
Okay.
I mean, I'd like to get a picture of where we are and I don't seem to be getting a good picture. Well, I mean, I'm getting a picture, it's cloudy, let's put it that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob.
Are there any other questions or issues?
I have one other issue from a member that lives at fifty-nine forty-two Granada. Sorry, I thought I was done until I got the text. Fifty-nine forty-two Granada, which is right by the Pink Palace, she lives in a triplex and hers is on the end and it's the only, she has a ditch exposed on both sides of her driveway and she wants that filled in like the others, so it's all level, because she wants to widen her driveway and put a place so she can put her cart in her gar- garage.
She's gotta go and get permits, huh? She gotta get permits.
Yeah.
She's, uh, she's gotta get permits for all
No, I, first she has to see if we can do it and she doesn't have to get the permits.
Yes, she does.
To widen her driveway?
Bob, I think, Bob, I think you could answer that question.
I'll go by there and take a look, you said Granada or Matanzas?
Yeah.
Pink Palace is on Matanzas.
Yeah.
Matanzas then, that's where the Pink Palace is.
Okay, I'll check it out and see what we can do.
Fifty-nine forty-two.
All right.
And just give us some direction.
There you go.
Thank you, Bob.
Anything else?